Good morning. I'll ask you to stand today for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, the God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, good morning again, and for the record, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers. In the back of the room, there is an automatic defibrillator if anybody is to need that for health reasons. Also, if you have any electronic devices, I'll ask you to silence them or please turn them off. Let me state before the meeting, this is a packed agenda, and we have a hard 1:30 set time in this room. And with that said, I'm gonna truly try to run in accord and ask everybody to be concise with their presentations, and I'll kinda lay out to you, if you got an agenda, you see some of the rules for debate on how we're gonna go. So, most of the presentations, I'm gonna ask you to try to keep it within 15 minutes or around there, and then we'll go from there. So, with that, I'll ask everybody to be prepared to heed for the orders of the day also. There's been some requests to go early, because everybody is asking to go early. Everybody's gonna have to stay in line. And so, with that, everybody should be bearing and ready to go. So, with that, we will call to order the Board of Equalization Meeting.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here, I think.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Sir Chair.
Here. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 7, 2019. Item B is call for meeting and set Tuesday, June 4, 2019. There's a date on hearing for certified corrections and assessments. What's the will of the Board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
I will. Yep. Yeah. Motion passes, and as a reminder to the public, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not show up on the screen because of technical difficulties.
With that, we'll go to item C, and that's citizens' comments for the Board of Equalization. This is an opportunity for citizens to make comments on Board of Equalization-related items, not listed on the BOE agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to resolutions. We'll take D, E, and F together. D is consideration and action of the 2019 Board of Equalization procedures. E is the consideration and action of approval of the 2019 Board of Equalization referees and coordinators, and F is a resolution to extend the Board of Equalization deadline from July 25, 2019, to August 10, 2019. What's the will of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I just have a couple of informational questions. I did speak with Ms. Hall regarding this, and I just wanted to get it on the record so people watching will understand this is an important procedure that we're considering here on the Board of Equalization procedures, and the deadline particularly for people who want to come in on protests of their appraised appraisals and get a face-to-face hearing with our referees. So, Ms. Hall, I appreciate the background that you gave me on this. Could you just outline briefly for the public what this extension is? There's a period of time when they can file for a face-to-face and get a face-to-face, and then what does this do?
It's Catherine Hall, County Administration. So, item F speaks to, there are certain counties based on a population. In the state of Nebraska, you can extend the deadline for which the Board of Equalization has to review the protests and take action on those valuations. And so, this extends this, and it gives the Board of Equalization more time. So, all property owners who wish to file a protest on their valuation, that doesn't change. That's the month of June for all property owners. And if they wish to, they may request an appointment with a referee to review their protest. And so, this deadline extends it so the Board has additional time to review those recommendations and take action.
So, when a property owner wants to object, what's their period for filing that objection now?
The month of June.
And does this affect that?
No.
Then, what would this affect? What portion of that procedure would this affect?
This affects the Board of Equalization, your opportunity to review and take action on those recommendations that the referees make.
And these face-to-face hearings that we're talking about, when do they occur?
Typically, we begin scheduling those about middle, end of June, and those go through about mid-July.
And would this affect that period?
Not necessarily. I mean, it gives us more time to lengthen those if necessary. But those are, we're usually typically able to keep those within about a four or five-week range, based on the requests the property owners submit.
So, I mean, this is to make it, so if there are a large number of these requests for face-to-face and then challenges of evaluation, more time for us to get those things accomplished. Is that correct?
Sure, if necessary, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, there is a motion, the second. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle, the BOE, D, E, and F, the BOE. That's okay. Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Remaining items, G, H, and E. What's the routine? What's the will of the Board? G, H, and I, sorry. Now, the motion, Commissioner, there's a motion by Commissioner Borgeson to approve G, H, and I adjourned, and there's a second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote. Commissioner Boyle?
I have a question, and, well, it's on the, it's on an exemption from the UNMC physicians. And it's one that's always, it's kinda been a sticky one, and it's down in the section that says, "All organizations except for an agricultural and horticultural society must complete the following questions." Is all of the property used exclusively as described above? Yes. And then it says, "Is the property used for financial gain or profit to either the owner or owner or organization making exclusive use of the property?" And it says, "No." It's a building being used by UNMC doctors, and probably some of mine.
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor/Register of Deeds Office. Commissioner Boyle, what we've got today are actually applications for business personal property, things like computers and so forth. And the rules for them are basically the same as for real property. They have to meet a five-part test. The owning organization has got to be charitable, educational, religious, or cemetery organization. It's gotta be predominantly, the property has to be predominantly used for one of those purposes. The property cannot be used for gain or profit to the owner or the user. The gloss that's been put on that by the state of Nebraska has been that reasonable salaries to staff does not count as impermissible gain or profit. The fourth and fifth tests are sort of like free spaces in bingo. Almost nobody runs afoul of those. One is that the property cannot be used for the sale of alcohol for more than 20 hours a week, and the fifth part of the test is the organization owning the property cannot discriminate in its membership on the basis of race or ethnicity. So, the test for these, this personal property, this is all business personal property here, is the same as for buildings.
Well, and I, you know, I appreciate that. What I'm asking is, it seems that it's kind of the state winking at what's going on. I mean, the doctors that work in those buildings obviously are paid, and the equipment that they use is paid for some way.
Sure.
And so, there, it's kind of a, to me, it's a stretch that this question here that says either yes or no, is all of the property used, excuse me, is used, is the property used for financial gain or profit to either the owner or owners or organizations making exclusive use of the property? And the answer is no.
Well, the organizations themselves are nonprofit organizations, and you can, we can have this argument, and we probably have had, about the nature of modern healthcare and modern hospital organizations. That's a perfectly valid argument to make. But in terms of the doctors being paid or the staff being paid, you know, reasonable salaries are not thought of as gain or profit. What the state has viewed as impermissible gain or profit is the distribution of profits typically in the form of, you know, some sort of dividend or some sort of addition on top of what a reasonable salary is.
Okay, so, let me ask you this. It seems as though that a group of accountants could do the same thing and set up an organization and kinda try to do the same thing. I mean, the reason this is so bothersome, you know, they couldn't do exactly the same thing, but the reason it's bothersome is that they, these organizations will tell us, once a year they're required, I believe, to tell us that they have rendered so many dollars in free care, and so we don't pay any taxes. So, in the meantime, we're still struggling trying to offer mental health care, other kinds of care to people, homeless and all the rest of it, that's coming out of the property tax bucket.
Sure.
And so, you know, it really makes, begs the question to me, and I think others, why don't we just play it straight and tax this organization and use that revenue? We'll do the work. You give us the money, we'll do it, because, you know, we'll give it back to you to do it or something, because this doesn't seem to be working really well. I'm not gonna take any more time, but I appreciate your explanation very much.
If I might just add one item, and that is, the current state of the law in terms of the definition of charitable for exemption purposes.
Right.
Talks about providing a mental, social, or physical benefit to the public where an indefinite number of persons. And there is case law going back to the 1920s in our state that seemed to, seems to take the proposition that hospitals and medical care providers meet that charitable definition. And so, if you, if you wanted to see, and currently, there really is no requirement for the healthcare provider to maintain its exemption by maintaining a certain level of free or reduced-cost care. It's not required. When we, we have an addition to the application we asked for from hospitals and healthcare providers, where we asked for that, just because the one case I can think of where a hospital lost an exemption because they were thought of as no longer charitable was a case in Illinois where basically they provided zip, nada, free medical care. And in fact, they, they were quite hard-knuckled when it came to trying to collect. I mean, they behaved really, there wasn't a charitable element at all, and at least in that case, they lost their exemption. My understanding is they've changed their practices, and now they're exempt again. But that's the current state of the law. So, if you, if you wanted to do something like that and say, to keep your exemption hospital, you've gotta provide X amount of dollars of free medical care as a condition of keeping your exemption, you'd probably have to do something statutory. Now, the one thing I would suggest, and this has been more of a municipal thing than a county thing across the nation, is that there are a number of jurisdictions, and the two that come to mind most frequently are Boston and Minneapolis, that put the arm on large property holders who are property tax exempt, like hospitals and universities, for what's called an in lieu of tax payment. And they'll go to those entities and they'll say, you know, "You use our streets. You have the protection of our police and firefighters. Your employees are using our schools. You know, how about a little something, something to help the, you know, to help pay for it all?" And at least in those jurisdictions, they've been able to work out in lieu of tax agreements. I don't think those provide, those hospitals or universities are paying what they would pay if they were fully assessed, but they're paying more than, I mean, they're paying in more to the pot than what they would have been paying. We're not for those in lieu of agreements. But those are kind of pioneers in the field, and I think municipalities have had more success with that than counties.
Well, one of the reasons that I brought this up, and we'll have to discuss it at length, and I do appreciate your explanation of it, is 84th and Dodge, where so many buildings are now in the hands of Children's Hospital, and it seems like all of them are. It has impacted the property tax collections for District 66 and caused them a black hole in their, in their budget. And it's very bothersome, because I think almost every building near.
Sure.
Or it within blocks of that intersection is now paying no taxes at all. And it seems like that's the brick wall that I feel like we've hit. So, we'll be in touch further. Appreciate your information, but I think the rest of the county board wants to look into this as well. Thank you.
Hold on, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mr. Goodwilly, if I heard you correctly, there's currently a standard by which Commissioner Boyle was inquiring about, we can judge these healthcare providers on the basis of their contribution of free or charitable healthcare?
Well, how do I wanna put this? Implicitly is the notion, well, I'm not sure we can. What I am saying is that there is a case out of Illinois which has a slightly different definition of charitable in their statutes for exemption, under which the taxing authority thought, "That hospital is not doing enough. They aren't meeting a couple of the tests in terms of providing free or reduced-cost care to indigent people." They weren't, they weren't making it known that that might be an option, and if somebody didn't pay timely, they were maybe a step above, you know, sending Moose and Rocco around to collect on the bill. The test is a little bit, with exemptions, there are some basics, some commonalities among most states, but there is also some variance in definition. And the state statute in Illinois, I think, provided a wider or broader opportunity to scrutinize that. We ask for it just because, quite frankly, if they aren't providing anything, then it's kind of a, you know, we would have to think long and hard before we thought they really were providing mental, social, or physical benefit to the public or an indefinite number of persons. But there's, there's no real requirement.
Does the statute prohibit us from taking that into consideration when we make these determinations?
The test is, at least for whether an organization is charitable or not, is it organized and operated for the mental, social, or physical benefit of the public or an indefinite number of persons? And the property has got to be used for, that's the definition of charitable, and the property has to be used for charitable, educational, religious, or cemetery purpose. So, I suppose you could look at it. Now, if, if I were sitting in Teresa's chair back there and were advising you about taking that on, I would say it would be an uphill fight with hospitals, simply because every time the issue comes up, our courts say, "Yeah, of course, a hospital is charitable." And that is sort of the prevailing law around the country, prevailing view. In fact, here in Nebraska, if it's, if it could be deemed reasonably necessary to the operation of the hospital, it's gonna be exempt. Not just the hospital itself, but an adjunct that's reasonably necessary. There was a case some years back involving Emmanuel Hospital, and they opened a daycare for their staff. And here in Douglas County, back in the day, the assessor's office and county board said, "Hey, we don't think that's, we don't think that's charitable." And the Supreme Court said, "Hey, they provided evidence to us that it cut down absenteeism, it helped their staffing, and was a boon overall to the operation of the hospital. We're gonna exempt it." So, at least on the current state of the statutory and case law, it would be an uphill fight.
So, you've been doing this for a while, and you probably recall, as I understand, the last tax-paying hospital in the state of Nebraska was Creighton University Medical Center. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know why they were any different, because as hospitals go, there's actually a standard imposed by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services called disproportionate share. That means what share of your hospital population are basically Medicaid people?
Gotcha.
People that have economic need for medical services and are reimbursed by Medicaid. Those hospitals are recognized by the federal government as special and are given different reimbursement rates than, say, a hospital that doesn't treat very many or any Medicaid individuals. Those exist all over the state. As a matter of fact, the Douglas County Health Center gets disproportionate share because we deal with a very large portion of Medicaid needy people. So, you were around when that occurred.
And what I recall, the difference was, is at some point, that hospital became owned by a for-profit entity.
Tenant healthcare. I was an employee.
Yeah, well, that's the difference.
The fact that they were managed.
Yes, ownership. The initial test for exemption is the property has got to be owned by an organization operated exclusively for yada, 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 yada. And a for-profit entity is really not one of those things. In fact, it runs afoul of the third test. The property cannot be used for the gain or, for gain or profit by the owner or, or user. And so, when tenant owned it, it was just like any other for-profit business, and that's why they weren't exempt.
Okay. So, if we were to look at these in terms of, what do you do in terms of your disproportionate share, would there be a basis in law for us to pursue that as a standard to determine whether or not they're providing charity? Because charity, to me, means, "I'm not getting paid for this. It's charity."
Yeah, I think it's an uphill fight, and here's why, is because in some of the case law, what our courts have said is that a charitable, a charitable thing under our exemption law can mean providing a useful service for which a fee is charged. And under the definition of charitable, it talks about mental, social, or benefit to the public or an indefinite number of persons. So, I'm out, if I'm out in my garage one Saturday afternoon, and I'm, I'm doing something, and I lop off my finger with my brand-new spiffy circular saw, it's probably a boon to society that if I put that finger on ice, I can go someplace and have them see if they can sew the damn thing back on. And, and, and so, I think there's, there's a distinction that courts around the country have said, first of all, they don't mean charity is always free for nothing. They look at the value of the service to society. And as the case law currently stands, the courts have taken the view that providing medical service to the public, having that available, you know, whether it's lopping off your finger, or you're in a car accident, or whatever it happens to be, is something that meets the definition of mental or social, mental, social, or physical benefit to the public. So, in my mind, I think you'd almost have to have like a total breakdown of anything that even resembles that to be able to tug those back onto the tax rolls.
Okay. Just informationally, I have received, and I'll share it with the commissioners, a map from our GPS people, the department, of all of the tax-exempt properties in Douglas County. Kind of following up on something that Commissioner Morgan has brought up in previous discussions relative to exactly what we're talking about, these healthcare facilities, which are enormous and currently represent the largest single industry employer in Douglas County possibly in Nebraska, and are, I guess, totally tax-exempt for property tax purposes, right?
Assuming they're using the property, yeah. I mean, a lot of them will lease space to for-profit clinics, and that space is taxable. But at least as it stands now and at the state of the law, yeah, mostly they're exempt.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Goodwilly, very good job of talking about this and explaining it, and you know that I've talked about it for probably more than five years.
Yes, exactly.
Or longer. And I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Kavanaugh. The fact is, the hospitals do provide great service. And as I've told the other commissioners, when I watch, Annie and I watch the nightly commercials by all the hospitals, it almost makes you wanna check in and go to the hospital. But the fact is, you know, the hospitals are charitable. If you can't pay your bill, they're gonna make certain you can't pay it, and then it is charitable. The second thing that bothers me greatly, and I don't think most people are aware of it, if you look at those doctors' buildings, separate from the hospital, 89th and Dodge, 156 and Dodge, and other locations, that are doctors' buildings, many of those doctors will not take appointments today, whether they have insurance or not. They're full, and they're operating basically for profit. You're not gonna be able to go there even if you have insurance, because they're full as far as patients and so on. Those are tax-exempt. And what you see happening is you can say, "Well, the county should be doing well, because my property taxes have gone up." Well, the fact is that you have the HDR buildings that were paying property taxes. More than 50% of their property taxes went to District 66, city, and then county, and so on. And the fact is, that's gonna be off the books. I'm not sure if it's now or next year, but I think it's now.
I think 2019 is gonna be the first year they come off.
And suddenly, you've gotta make up, with tremendous amount of increases in property taxes, that loss of revenue. Other states, Minneapolis, as you mentioned, and I've given Patrick some of this information on payment in lieu of tax at the pilot program, Minneapolis is taxing those doctor buildings.
Well, is it taxed, or is it a pilot program?
No, they're actually putting property taxes onto some of the doctors' buildings in Minneapolis.
Okay.
Not just pilot. Back East are using the pilot program more, and I'm open to being corrected about that, but I know when we did some search on that before, we found that the doctors' buildings were being taxed in Minneapolis.
Okay. Well, I guess I wonder if Minnesota state law might be slightly different than ours.
But I think what we need to do, and we do meet with our legislators, is at least take a look at that at some point and get yourself and Diane Bodyato and all of us on the same page to talk about that together and see if it's something we should work together on to look at in our community. And we wanna be respectful and fair to those medical institutions. But I think for the citizens, it is a problem, and there's more and more buildings being taken down and these tax-exempt buildings being built. So, I just wanna mention that, and citizen input on this is so important for us. So I just want to mention that, and citizen input on this is so important for us, and I appreciate all of your comments and input and knowledge.
Okay. There is a motion to approve GHNI adjourned. Please vote.
Oh, sorry. Motion passes.
Okay. With that, we'll call it to order the Board of Corrections Meeting. Roll call.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't give you time.
I'm not used to sitting here. Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections Meeting held Tuesday, April 16th. And for the record, the high-level staff at the Department of Corrections are out of town. They've submitted a report for the board, and questions for that report will be, can be answered at the next committee meeting. So with that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No vote.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, and seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Does it also include adjournment?
Yes.
Yes, it does. With that, please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, please vote. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh, we need your vote. Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Oh, well, now, give you time to recycle before we call to order the board of.
I'm ready.
We'll call to order the Board of Commissioners Meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims. Letter A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting held Tuesday, May 7, 2019. And the Douglas County Justice Center forms held Monday, May 6, and Tuesday, May 7, 2019. Is there a motion? Well, let's go. And item B is approval of the minutes, approval of claims submitted for payment, processed through Tuesday, May 28, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Approval of the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Duda is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
A couple of questions. It says approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting held May 7, but you added something about some other minutes. What was that?
That was the forms that the board held on May 6, and I need to make an addition to that, May, May 7 and May 9.
What, what meetings were those?
Those are public forms on the Justice Center.
They're not listed on this agenda. They didn't receive publication as action items.
They are listed under minutes and claims for approval. Those board, those forms were posted because there were more than three commissioners there.
Yes, I understand, but the notice, and I'd guess I'd ask the county attorney, are we required to notice things on this when we're approving them, when we're taking action on these items?
Tracy, Tracy York County Attorney's Office. I believe that, that this is on the, I do not understand the question. This is on the agenda. It's clearly there. With regards to the meetings, I believe those were also on prior agendas, notifying the public that those forums would be held. And I would defer to county admin. I believe they were, I believe they were published as well, because there were going to be more than, a possibility of more than three commissioners present.
They were published.
Yes, I understand that part. What I'm saying is, if you look at today's agenda, they're not included in today's agenda. Is that correct?
The agenda that I have before me, looking at the Board of Commissioners, says approval of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, May 7, and the Douglas County Justice Center forums held Monday, May 6, and Tuesday, May 7. Chair Rogers said he was going to add the third forum, because it was inadvertently left off. So I do see it on today's agenda.
Okay. The agenda that we received, I guess, were subsequently changed to include these. Is, is that what I'm seeing? Because I, I'm looking at the May 21st agenda that we received. Yeah. And I just don't see the, oh, the agenda that came out this morning has it, not the agenda that was sent to, to us as the final agenda. I guess my question is, the reason, the rationale for this being a agenda item that we would approve the minutes to is because a majority of the board attended these meetings. Is that correct?
I don't know all the rationales, but that certainly could be one, and I believe it's also important in looking at that, that this board did publicize them on prior agendas for this body. They were, they were published and held as open and public meetings, just as this body is at this time.
Okay. So the quorum of this body of four meeting is a public meeting. Is that correct?
There's more than a one-part test for the determination of a public meeting. That is one part of that test.
All right. What's the other part?
Well, there are several cases on that, as well as the Open Meetings Act, but I'll try to summarize. So it's not enough that you would have four commissioners in a room. It would, they would also need to be conducting public business. That would be a very nutshell explanation. So four of you happen to be standing, I don't know, having lunch somewhere, in the same restaurant, that's not a public meeting.
Okay. Then what's the second part? I mean, I'm failing to grasp, there's four, and then there's a second part. What is that second part?
Again, in a nutshell, you would be conducting some sort of public business. So in my example, if you're, four of you happen to be in the same restaurant, having lunch at the same time, that is not a public meeting. You're not doing anything for the furtherance of the government or public business.
I see. And so these meetings, the two meetings that are listed here are May 6 and May 7. What was the public business conducted at those meetings?
Oh, come on.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, I did not attend those meetings. I would refer you to whatever the agendas were for those meetings. And I, I believe that, and I will let the other commissioners respond if they feel they need to, but I believe that they were trying to have a public forum to foster additional discussion within the community about the Juvenile Justice Center. But I did not personally attend.
Okay. And I, I think that's probably right. I guess my point is, we're discussing these as if they require us to recognize them as public meetings, but there are other meetings that meet these requirements on this exact same topic that are being held, have been held, and we're not, A, keeping minutes, or B, recognizing them as public meetings. And so I guess if we're applying this test to public meetings, particularly on this topic, why didn't we apply this test to the public meeting held with the majority of these same commissioners in attendance at the Sherwood Foundation last month, with public officials from Douglas County in attendance, and discussing this exact same subject matter? Why, why are some of these public meetings, public meetings, and some of them that have the same people and the same topic, not public meetings?
Commissioner, I'll try to summarize again. Within the Open Meetings Act, there's also a list of things that are exceptions to the Open Meeting Act, and one of those is seminars and attending workshops and things of that nature. And so there can be instances, again, where the four commissioners are present in a room, and it's not a public meeting. And so I gave you a very nutshell version of, of what constitutes a public meeting, but there are, in the Open Meetings Act, exceptions to that.
Right. And what I'm saying is, we seem to be very subjective in our application of the same rules to some meetings, but not to other meetings. The same people attending, discussing the same things with public officials and public policy behind closed doors, in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And commissioners that were there know what I'm talking about. It was held at the Sherwood Foundation offices. Commissioners, members of the judiciary, members of Douglas County Government were in attendance. I believe members of our staff may have been in attendance as well, exactly as these meetings that we're talking about right now. But those are not considered public meetings, and these are. It seems to be, you know, a very double-standard kind of a test of what is a public meeting and what isn't. I mean, are you aware of these other public meetings even going on?
Commissioner, I don't know what meetings you are speaking of.
Okay. There was a meeting in April. Commissioners that are sitting here right now were at that meeting, at the Sherwood Foundation offices on the ConAgra campus, that involved the same topic, the Douglas County Ju- Justice Center, and involved some of the same people from Douglas County Government, but it wasn't published, and it wasn't recognized as a public meeting. You know, one thing is, is a public meeting, and the other is, somewhere along the line, you're violating the Public Meetings Act. I mean, either you're overapplying it to these things, or you're underapplying it to the exact same kinds of meetings that are occurring behind closed doors with the majority of this board. I mean, my point is, this seems to be a very flexible public meetings application that we're trying to apply here, and not apply to back-room meetings on the same, very same topic, involving the very same board of commissioners. So I guess I would object to these forums being considered public meetings if the other forums aren't considered public meetings, or the other forums should be included as public meetings if these are public meetings, one way or the other. You can't have it both ways.
Commissioner Boyle?
I was at, I was at that meeting, and I came in a couple minutes late, so I had the privilege of sitting way up in front, just like in church. So anyway, but no collection was taken. Anyway, I guess the way I would explain it, when I looked around the room, there were two judges from juvenile court, I believe the presiding judge. The public defender was present, and there were quite a few people from Sherwood who were involved and, and who have worked very hard on this project. I was seated next to the young man who called the meeting, and I think his first name was Tom, I don't remember his last name. And it was a presentation by the Voices for Children, and about the expense of not taking care of children, which we've seen repeatedly. But in any event, what happened was, I saw Commissioners Duda and Craft at the other end, they got there earlier, and they were over by the food. Anyway, they were at that end. And so the conversation was going on, and so questions were asked and so forth, and, and I glanced up, and then I saw Commissioner Rogers, and it dawned on me that now there's four of us. And I'll be honest, I didn't, I didn't think, well, maybe I should leave, or I just stand up and say, wait a minute, we can't do this. What happened was, the young man, I believe, the young man sitting next to me, was the one who called the meeting, and did not realize that if four of us showed up, then it was a public meeting. And I immediately got a call from the shark from the World Herald, Mr. Burbach, who called and said, what happened? How come you had a public meeting and no notice? And I said, I believe it was an honest mistake. It was the same sort of thing we've been discussing. He asked me, should I, did it occur to you to leave? And I said, sort of, but I didn't want to. It was, damage was done, and there was nothing startling going on. So I chalk it off as an honest mistake. Mr. Burbach can speak for himself, but I believe he did do some checking with, and maybe even filed a complaint, I'm not sure, with accountability and disclosure, made some, did what he should do as a journalist. But as, as all of us know, it's difficult sometimes. This morning, Commissioners Morgan and I, and Commissioner Borgeson were talking about a budget, and I saw Commissioner Rogers walk by, and he started to come in the office, turned around, and went the other way. So we're very sensitive to it. I chalk it off as an honest mistake, at which nothing startling was, was discussed. That's not good enough, but somehow we need to do better at open meetings, and I, I apologize for contributing to the confusion.
Commissioner Borgson.
Well, I guess there is no confusion, except for what he's just created, as usual. And that was a pub, a person calling a meeting, it was not our meeting. There's a difference. There are meetings and seminars and conferences that we go to where there is a majority of commissioners. For years, that's occurred. There's community organizations and agencies and businesses in this community, the Chamber of Commerce, when they have their luncheon. There's been times where there's been four of us there. That's an, that's not a violation of an open meeting. And so, again, it wasn't our meeting. We didn't call the meeting. It was a meeting that we were invited to attend, to hear the presentation from Voices for Children and their data that they put together for the cost of keeping kids in our juvenile justice system.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. You brought up some of the seminars we go to and the educational things, and this was attended as an educational thing. It was not intended to count, discuss county business. It was discussed, to discuss a program that was taking place through, I forgot which organization right now. Voices for Children. Voices for Children, which is not a county organization. So they wanted to inform us, and we'd been informed at this forum right here, what they were going to discuss about, and it was a lot of it the same, but it was more in-depth. Instead of having a 15-minute presentation, they had an hour-and-a-half presentation. And, you know, we did not discuss items, they were not on the agenda to discuss. There was no collusion, as, as Mr. Kavanaugh is trying to infer. There is no conspiracy.
Uh-oh.
So, yeah, this conversation's taken way longer. I wish you could formulate things in a short form, Mr. Kavanaugh, instead of taking 20 minutes to explain what could be done in five. So, thank you.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I will not be voting, because there is, there are some checks to my company, so abstain.
Is it on another item?
Oh, yes, it is.
Go ahead.
There is a check, number 523912, for $1,359,504 to the Public Building Commission, I think basically to pay HDR and company on this very topic that we're talking about. Again, there hasn't been any public discussion of this 1.3-plus million dollar thing, but I, I guess if we're going to be signing checks like that, we should probably discuss with the public what we're proposing to spend their money on. And it doesn't say in the documents here what exactly we are spending that money on. It says Oracle Invoice Number 8433, dated March 15, 2019, a couple months ago, still no discussion, for a check that's already been cut, dated today. And under the other portion of it, where it says, check status, it says negotiable. Well, I don't know that there's been any negotiation. There certainly hasn't been any public discussion on this. However, it's, I believe, designed to pay the private corporation that is going to come before us today, I think, and present another commercial for their building proposal. This is problematic on a couple of different levels. First of all, I mean, we're spending a lot of money without discussion at, on things that have nothing to do with Douglas County operations. Right now, we're going to have some discussions on budget matters that do, deal with our operations, our ongoing operations, the services we provide for people. This is for services of a private corporation, on whose board several of the commissioners sitting here serve, or have served, and have demonstrative conflicts of interest, not only in serving on both boards, but in paying the constituent members of that board, in this case, 1.3-plus million dollars. This comes from our, I guess, general fund. I don't remember this being budgeted. There's never been any budget discussion on this. And it's proposed to pay them for, among other things, the commercial that you'll see later today, on a building project that has not been approved. To give you some context, in 2016, we had a bond issue to do a building project that's in these final stages of completion, on budget and on time. Voter approved, but before that voter approval, not a voter approval, not a single penny was spent by us for these kinds of services. Now, no bonds have been approved on this project. There's been no public bond authority issued to go forward with this pub, project, and yet we are being called on to spend over 1.3 million dollars on god knows what, but I guess we'll see part of it in the commercial that we'll see later today, of a design of an unapproved project. As a matter of fact, the last time it came before the Building Commission, it was turned down. In January of this year, this project came before the Building Commission, and the Building Commission voted not to go forward with the bond issue authorizing this project. So why in the world are we paying 1.3 million dollars, and we'll discuss operations later for a lot less money for integral departments of Douglas County that were, were making them come before us and justify, but willy-nilly, in a pile of checks, we're just supposed to say, okay, 1.3 million dollars to Burlington Capital, HDR, Peter Kewitt and Sons, for work that has not been approved by anybody? And, you know, on the other side, people in this community have worked uncompensated thousands of hours on alternatives to this proposal, and this board has refused to even compensate the alternative consideration of this proposal, which again, hasn't been approved by anybody, there's no bonding authority in place for this. Why are we doing this horse, cart before the horse, funding of this private corporation, which has members on this board, sitting on its Board of Directors, in blatant conflict of, of interest, when we're obviously under some budgetary constraints, because we're making our own departments come before us and justify very, very modest budget requests, far in, far less than the 1.3 million dollars that this proposes to spend on Burlington Capital, HDR, Peter Kewitt and Sons, through this private corporation. So, I am moving that we remove this payment from our checks for approval here today, because there is no project. There's no project approved by anybody to pay this money for. And paying these people to promote their own self-interests with our money strikes me as the worst kind of public policy imaginable. So I move that we vote no on check 523912 for $1,359,504.
I interpret that to mean there's a motion to separate that out. And with that said, is there a second for that? That motion does, we lack a second. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, I'm gonna reiterate something I said a minute ago. I sure wish Mr. Kavanaugh could learn to be clear and concise, and instead of spending whatever length of time that was, stayed it just once instead of 16 times, I don't think he did 16 times this time, but at least five times. You know, the other thing is, you just have this tremendous ability to misrepresent something. This has been discussed and approved by this board, and it's been discussed and approved by this board, should I repeat it 16 times, people? Mr. Lawrence, would you explain what this is and how we are going to be reimbursed, as explained previously, for this? Oh, by the way, also explain to Mr. Kavanaugh the word negotiable on a check, what it means?
That check represents, was a payment to the Building Commission, and it was based on the reimbursement services agreement, which was approved by the County Board, you know, quite, quite a bit ago. And it involves fees that were paid by the Building Commission for work on, evaluation work on the Juvenile Justice Center, and the way it was originally structured was that the Public Building Commission would pay this and be reimbursed by bond proceeds, but in the event that the bond proceeds were not available by a certain amount of time, that the Douglas County was contingently liable to make the Building Commission haul. So, the Building Commission paid those expenses, and then, now they've gotten to the point of the year where they need those funds, so they essentially called the note, and as, since we're contingently liable, we've reimbursed the Public Building Commission for those expenses, as specified in the reimbursement agreement approved by the County Board, and with the understanding that, assuming this project goes through and the bond issue goes through, that the county will be reimbursed this amount from the bond proceeds.
Thank you. And negotiable means you can cash it, correct? Yes, it does. So, Mr. Kavanaugh now knows what negotiable on a check means. The issue's been discussed a number of times, you ranted and railed about it a different time, and just like when you start, we approved a contract with the Blue Cross Blue Shield years ago, you've got your own agenda, your own interest, and you don't, I admire your passion sometimes, but at the same time, I was watching eyes over the decades, not decades, it just seems like it, over the years, and the audience glosses over when you get too lengthy. You lose your impactiveness. You need to learn how to be more effective than with everybody, instead of just a small group of individuals. Now, you would have probably noticed what we were voting on after you ranted and railed last time, and the time before, and the time before that, on this check issue when we discussed it, had you not been playing on your computer or your cellphone, like you do. Every time I look up, you're on your computer or your cellphone, not paying attention, so when we grill somebody, you ask questions that have been asked twice before, that happened yesterday at the meeting. You asked a question exactly as I had asked it. So, leave your cellphone alone, stop texting or playing cards or whatever you're doing, and pay attention to the business in front of us.
Hey, I'm asking the crowd to, to keep it down.
Yeah, I, I did lose my place, because I don't want to repeat myself. I don't want to be as redundant and asinine as Commissioner Kavanaugh has been many times.
With that, there's a motion, a second. Please vote.
We're already in the vote, we just need Commissioner Kavanaugh's vote. Motion passes, Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, and Commissioner Morgan abstaining.
Okay, go to item two, consent agenda, there's 16 items on the consent agenda. I would ask that item L seven be removed, vote separately. What's the will of the board?
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Well, before you go, hold for the record, I need to regulate this tighter, so we're under debate rules now, so you're on the clock.
On number H, just for the, again, public notice on what's happening here, I don't know if there is somebody from Douglas County Health Center here in a position to speak to H, is there?
Aaron is.
There we go.
Reluctantly coming forward.
I'm Nelson of the Douglas County Health Center.
H is a resolution to approve an agreement for medical director services between the Douglas County Health Center and UNMC physicians. In the Douglas County Health Center trustees meeting yesterday, this is the same resolution that was before us and was approved there, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you want to just briefly explain to folks what this does?
We have a medical director for the long-term care facility. We use a geriatric physician from UNMC to head our medical team. The only change in the contract was that we were no longer doing short-term rehab, so we took that out of our contract, but other than that, the contract remained the same.
Right. And I believe in the documents, a particular physician is named, is that correct?
Correct.
And that physician is?
Dr. Karina Bishop.
Okay. And Dr. Bishop has, has been in this position, or is?
Yes, for the last year.
Okay. And so, this is to make the amendment relative to the change in our services due to the closure of the, of short-term rehab care.
Short-term rehab, that is correct.
No other changes in terms and conditions of this thing?
No other changes to the contract, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item I seven.
L seven.
L seven, please vote. Item seven is amendment with the Charles Drew Health, Community Health Center regarding WIC Fund, oops.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle, please vote. And I need to abstain because of being on the Board of Directors of that organization.
One moment. Okay, please vote. Thank you. Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes, Commissioner Rogers is abstaining.
Item three is recognition proclamations. Letter A is resolution recognizing May's stepping ups month of action and reaffirming Douglas County support for the stepping up, a national initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I am gonna read this, because there's just a continuation of very, very good and important work that's going on, on this topic, and so, and again, it warrants the recognition. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to the estimated 2 million people with serious mental illness booked into jail each year, and whereas county jails spend two to three times more on adults with mental illness that require interventions compared to those without these treatment needs, and whereas in 2015, a national initiative called stepping up to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails was launched as a partnership of the Council of State Governments Justice Center, the National Association of Counties, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation. And whereas this initiative rallies national, state, and local leaders around the goal of achieving an actual reduction in the number of people with mental illness and substance use disorders in jail, and to encourage public, private, and nonprofit partners to find strategies and resources to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jails. And whereas to date, more than 475 counties in 43 states have passed a resolution or proclamation to join the initiative and commit to creating a data-driven, system-level plan to reduce the prevalence of mental illness in their jails, and to improve outcomes for people with mental illness in their communities. And whereas Douglas County continues to be a strong supporter of the initiative and affirms its ongoing commitment to effectively reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in our county jail, and whereas May is stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails, and we recognize the month of May is stepping up's month of action, dated this 21st day of May 2019. And a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Borges, and second by Commissioner Boyle, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item B and C, recognition of the following Douglas County employees who are retired, Janice F. Butler, who has retired from the Douglas County Youth Center after 30 years of service, and item C is the recognition of the county employee Michael K. McLennan, who has retired from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after 27 years. Are either of them here by chance? Seeing that they're not, I want to thank them for their service here over the years and wish them well in their retirement, is there a motion to approve B and C? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please, Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, you notice one is 30 years, one is 27 years. We in Douglas County are very fortunate to have very dedicated employees. Thank you.
With that, please, Commissioner Boyle.
I'd like to make a brief comment about Mike McClellan, I'm very familiar with him. I, at one time, was very active as a lawyer for the Fraternal Order Police in Nebraska, but not Douglas County or the city of Omaha, and Mike was an officer, and we worked together very closely, he's really a standout, and I want to acknowledge his great service to the citizens of Douglas County and to the Fraternal Order of Police Union. Thank you.
With that, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item four, citizens' comments, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on board of commissioner-related items that are not listed on the agenda. I ask citizens, if you're gonna comment, to please take note of the written comments, attached to citizens' comments, and we're gonna hold in accordance with that. Please go.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Been here a number of times, a couple times we've talked about the Open Meetings Act, and the fact that citizens can't talk back and forth with you like me, I can't do that now. If you care to read that full Citizens Open Meeting Act into the record, you'll find out that it's not for you people, it is also for citizens. Very plain, plain intent, is for citizens to be able to address their government. People have sat here and said, no, I think PJ Morgan was the one, maybe the last meeting or the one before that, that said, maybe you were joking. You said, that is for us. Uh-uh, it's not. As it relates to county governance, what citizens don't see on these videos, and on the cable TV broadcast, is the reactions by our elected individuals when somebody is assaulting another commissioner. Very funny act, Mr. Duda, very nice complimentary comments to your other commissioners, Mr. Kraft. My tax dollars go for this? I'm sorry, I'd like a refund, don't you?
Anyone else?
Brenda Gustafson, Intergovernmental Affairs with FEMA, we're at 1500 Innovation Drive in Lincoln. I just wanted to address you, because I'll be leaving Thursday, we're winding down, we've extended registration to June 19th, but we are kind of winding down on the individual assistance side, so I wanted to come, thank you for everything that you've done, especially for your citizens who are survivors, and the hospitality that you have shown to FEMA to come in and help. I did want to make a couple of just informational highlights. First of all, crisis counseling, which we find, as we go through this, there are, just like in grieving, there are cycles, and some people will need some crisis counseling that is available, and for your listeners, that number is 1-800-464-0258. The other thing that I wanted to mention is for those people that have National Flood Insurance Program, a lot of times they're not aware that there is an increased cost compliance rider on that insurance, which, it's not a rider, it's just available funds during a disaster that gives you additional funds for elevating, floodproofing, or hazard mitigation, which everyone should be looking at, how can you floodproof your home for future events, demolishing and/or relocation? So, they would need to contact their insurance agent, who they get their insurance through, but a lot of times people aren't aware of those funds. We have paid out $22 million to survivors throughout the state, and that's been for 5,800 registrants. So, again, I want to thank you, and I want to tell you that I, we have been so impressed with the people of Nebraska, their resilience, their way of taking on this issue with positivity, even through the disaster, so, again, thank you.
Okay, there's, people that want to respond to this, yours, because we're in this period, and to be fair, your responses need to be thank you and pointed. We're not gonna have dialogue. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to say thank you for the great job that you and FEMA have done during this very, very tough time for us here, and thanks for the regular communications, they've been very helpful. I really appreciate the outreach, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, you want to make a point to clear up, or do you still want to?
No, it was earlier.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to clarify for the citizens. If any item is on the agenda, then anyone from the public can come up and speak to that item on the agenda, and we can respond to any item on our agenda. If we have citizen comments concerning an item that's not on the agenda, we are directed by the county attorney's office not to comment. I'm just clarifying the way that our meetings operate. Teresa Urick, who's from the county attorney's office, if I've stated anything incorrectly, I would greatly appreciate your correction of what I've just stated.
No, no, Larry, we're not backing, no, 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 no. Uh-uh. Thank you, please, no. We're going to go on to item five, which is presentations. We're going to go to letter A, which is the economic benefits study of the investment in the proposed Douglas County Justice Center. While they're setting up, let me state how we're going to go about this. I'm going to give Dr. Goss 20 minutes for his presentation, and then after that, give people there in the public a chance to make a statement on the matter if they want to. It's not going to be a dialogue back and forth. This is not an action item, it's a presentation. So after that, then the board will have their allotted time to ask any questions. With that, before Dr. Goss gets present, let's know for the record, this was paid for by the, by HDR, Burlington Capital and the county. The county's contribution was $5,000 toward this. With that, Dr. Goss, thank you. First time you've been in front like this in a while? Good to see you.
It's been a while, and thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to speak. And I'd like to introduce my colleagues who are part of this study. Scott Strain, who was a co-author of this, and Alex Blaylock, who's, and be sure to hit Alex hard today. He's, he's going to be leaving my organization. He's just been commissioned to Second Lieutenant in the Army, and I'm trying to get that reversed, but we'll see. So, so, thanks to, thanks to these folks. So, thank you for allowing us to speak to you today. And the benefits and cost of the new Douglas County Youth Center. First off, let's look at the trend in average daily population, ADP, which is a good measure across the US. And you see it's dropped significantly over the last, between 2007 and 2017. I'm just showing here, trying to attempt to show you the decline in the demand for a larger facility, why a smaller facility, and a co-located facility would serve the people in a better fashion, and we'll adjust, we'll show you the numbers later on, the benefits of that. And here you see the average, the average length of stay also declining over the decade, over the 10-year period that we've shown. And looking at the crimes, violent crime, now this is Douglas County, these are Douglas County numbers, you see violent crimes are down significantly over the period 2004, 2006 to 2016 in Douglas County. And looking at nonviolent crimes, likewise. So, we're, we're seeing a decline in the crimes. Now, these are juvenile crimes, I should say, juvenile crimes, the year per thousand population of juveniles. So, we've seen a significant decline in juvenile crimes and the average daily population of juveniles in our, in our youth center. And here you look at this, I think this is an important number to look at. Look at the percent, now, these are Nebraska numbers, not Douglas County numbers. You see the misdemeanors versus felonies. Only about 10%, 10.6% of the crimes committed by juveniles are felonies, whereas 67.8% are misdemeanors, 18.4% are status crimes. That is a crime that a juvenile commits that would not be a crime for a non-juvenile. For example, individuals who buying liquor underage. For me, obviously, it would be not a crime. For the youth, it would be a crime. So, you see the, the percent of felonies are quite, is quite low. And looking at the, where would the savings come from, the, from the co-location? Now, again, the co-location of the facilities, the facility we examine, we, we measured, is construction of the facility. There are benefits from the construction alone, and those benefits come from monies coming from, for example, the Sherwood Foundation, where they'll be providing funds for the support of, to build the facility, or for the land that's there. And those would be, and now, I'm talking about, here, I'm talking about state, state and local tax collections. State, no, I'm sorry. I'm talking about local tax collections. That would, of course, be property taxes and sales taxes. Construction of the facility. Operational savings, there will be significant operational savings, and I'll get to those momentarily. Transportation savings in the sense of bringing individuals, the juveniles, from, that are currently being, being brought from the current facility to the legal community, those would be savings there as well. Increased educational achievement. Because of the diversion programs, and there's a heck of a lot of research that's gone into this, showing that diversion programs, individuals that go, juveniles that go through diversion programs as opposed to detention, there's, they achieve higher levels of education and as a result, lower unemployment rates, and as a result, higher wages, and likewise, higher property taxes and sales taxes that flow to Douglas County in this case. Reduced recidivism. And now, we'll talk more about that momentarily, and Scott will talk about it as well as Alex. We'll talk the details on the reduced recidivism for individuals that go through diversion programs. Diversion programs supported by Uta Holly, for example, supported by other organizations in town, the Boys Town, Boy, Boys Club as well, and other UNMC that provide diversion activities, diversion elements of diversion that individuals, instead of going to detention, that are, again, I say individuals, I'm speaking of juveniles, of course. Now, looking at, here are the, the numbers. Now, hopefully, you can see those numbers. The, the first column there is a 40, an average daily population facility, and that's a 20-year period, 20-year period. And you see the construction activity contribution, $5.1 million. That's likewise for the four, for a 30-year period. Then you see operational savings of $33.3 million or $33.4 million. You see for the 30-year period, that's a $55.8 million savings. Transportation savings, $1.3 million for the 20-year period, $2.1 for the 30-year period. Now, I think it's important also to point out that, as you probably know, when you're talking about transportation, you're bringing these young men and women down to the, to, you're bringing them to the legal community from the current location in shackles. And that's, at least a lot of research shows that that alone produces some negative outcomes, and we, we do measure some of that. Increased educational requirement, increased educational attainment, $2.8 million. Now, that's because these, those individuals that go into diversion programs as opposed to detention achieve a higher level of education, and then likewise, lower levels of unemployment, so they pay more in property taxes, they pay more in sales taxes. Of course, they pay more in state taxes, but we only looked at the local, state, the local taxes, and that would be primarily property tax, sales taxes, and other fees that go into local taxes. You see the savings due to recidivism. Now, this is quite significant. $121.8 million on a 20-year period, and $190.8 million for a 30-year period. And below, you see the total, the total benefits of $164.5 million, that's for a 20-year period, and then $218.5 million for a 30-year period. Then you see the bond cost, the bond cost there of $39.4 million in both 20-year and 30-year period. Now, we're looking at continuing the bond for 30 years. Those numbers, the period, that period of bond payment was given to us, we assume that. And you see the total benefit of, for each dollar of local community support, local community support, of $4.17 for the 20-year period, excuse me, and $6.6 dollars and 56 cents for the 30-year period. So, these are quite significant. And, and then I'll just, that, I just want to give you a short, brief summary of what our findings are, and allow plenty, plenty of time for your questions, and just leave it for questions. And Scott and Alex will join me in answering your, any of your questions.
Dr. Goss, how are we going to do it? There's some people from the public here. As we said, this is not going to be a dialogue, but I want to allow the public to make comment if they want to. So, at this time, Dr. Goss, if anybody from the public wants to make comment. See none? Well, then, I mean, people need to move. I'm looking, and nobody's moving. Okay. No, when we're published through, we'll go through the board, through a lot of time. I ask the public to please note the clock. Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Constance Myrendorf, I speak to you now as a retired English professor. I began my career at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, taught English for over 20 years. And I wanted to just approach this from that point of view. Most recently, taught at the University of Minnesota, upper division English. I had students who were business and technical writers and majors. I often gave my students this kind of assignment, this kind of little report. And I want to say that it is a wonderful report in that it is well-presented, it's very clear, it's attractive. But a big part of the way I would grade this is on the logical, adequate, accurate, and relevant supporting data. For that, I'm afraid this gets an F. Let me get, go through this. First of all, if I were a city planner, I would look at this, and I would tear down a bill, a city block in every single city in America so that I could show this kind of benefit to the community. First of all, the report falsely promotes the economic benefits of the jail. It is really based on wishful thinking. Those, the negative effects on the neighborhood are clear to us because we've seen what the current corrections center has done to that corridor. We don't have to look at Minneapolis, we don't have to look at St. Paul, we don't have to look at any place else in the country, we just have to look down the street. The negative effects on the development and existing business and residents would far outweigh the benefits, and they last forever. Number two, the statistics about the average daily population on page five of the report, any freshman in an introductory logic class would raise their hand and say, look, there is a drop in violent crime. That major drop occurred between 2007 and 2013, and that occurred in the existing youth center. Since 2013, the rate has leveled off, and the chart also omits 2018, which according to Mr. Alexander's report on March 26th, the average daily population was at 78. Year-to-date, he reported at that meeting, a population of 84. That brings us to an average for those years, this leveling off that we've seen nationally, not just in Douglas County, to an average of 76. So, in those years, the range of the average daily population was from 68 to a high of 91. So, a facility that provides 64 beds or 48 beds, or as this report suggests, 40 beds, I would fail this paper because it doesn't meet the requirements of the assignment. 40 beds is not what is being proposed, nor it hasn't ever been discussed in this body. We're all in favor of diversion programs. We don't need a $39 million inadequate jail cell to initiate those. Let's start those programs today. Let's start them immediately. Increased educational achievement has nothing to do with the building. If you're in a cell block downtown, I would suggest that the educational environment is not as conducive to learning as the 42nd Street facility. Number four, according to the US Department of Justice, oh, excuse me, US Department of Justice Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, the youth population under the age of 18 is expected to grow 2% between 2015 and 2025, and 4% by 2030. Omaha is clearly in a growth trend and may meet these projections, so our population is increasing. Reduced transportation costs are a fallacy. We've talked about adding Uta Halle, Child Savings Institute, and Omaha Home for Boys. Those kids will also need to come to court. So, how is replacing the youth center on 42nd Street, a, but with three additional places, a savings? Kids would still have to come to court, and how is that more efficient than bringing four kids at a time, or three kids at a time, from 42nd Street? And certainly, those are further away from the downtown courthouse and less accessible to families. Sixth, kids have been safely transported from 42nd Street for decades. Why the concern now for their quote-unquote "safety"? All of the trauma-informed strategies promoted by the private corporation can be accomplished better at the 42nd Street location. The increased income from reduced recidivism is not a given because we build a new jail. It's just bricks and mortar, people. Let's get the programs in place. Let's get the psychiatric and psychological help that these kids need, and the early childhood programs. What about the kids who are less, or are younger than 12 years old? Where are the programs for them? Let's put our money there. Okay? This is a construction project, not a project focused on the best interests of our kids or taxpayers.
Thank you.
Good morning to all of you. I wish that I could say that after all these months of butting heads...
Want to give your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry.
An address?
Norma Leclair. I'm glad to be back from out of town.
What's your address? What's your address, ma'am?
I'll start over. Good morning to all of you. I wish that I could say that after all these months of butting heads over the juvenile justice proposals, that everyone is thrilled, but I can't. Since last June, I've attended all kinds of meetings all over town to become more informed. What I have observed is that you've spent a lot of time and money trying to sell a project and an idea that the public is not buying. It pains me to think that you have spent more money on yet another study, money that could have been spent on current programs at the current youth detention center. There is a groundswell of interest on the public side, and they have many concerns that have not been addressed, mainly taxation without a vote. If I were in your shoes, and thank God I'm not, I would really slow down and listen to the taxpayers. I've had the privilege of meeting some very smart people, more all the time. You really should have them on your side. As I see it, your work has just begun. It's time to really listen to folks who are not on your payroll. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Dr. Scott Williams, 1139 South 93rd Avenue in Omaha. I am interested to see that the, the board is receiving, well, the board and the other affiliated agencies and organizations are receiving information about the proposed project that is upcoming because it is, without a doubt, one of the most significant, substantial, expensive projects that our county has undertaken in decades and probably will undertake for decades. So, to have a full understanding of the financial ramifications is certainly valuable. So, I appreciate the endeavor to try and find information about that. Unfortunately, from my perspective, we only had just a very brief summary of what I understand to be quite a lengthy report, so it's difficult for the public to have a fuller understanding. I know that we've been instructed on a number of occasions not to have a dialogue or a back and forth with, with, with the county board. So, I, I guess I will posit the question, will the summary, will the study that has been summarized this morning be available to the public, or is it already?
It's available online.
Great, fantastic. So, my comments are about what I've heard this morning and what I've understood from the study without having been able to fully read the, the study as is posted online. I don't understand how the, well, to be honest, the, the most significant number that I saw in the presentation this morning was $120 million in its savings from reduced recidivism. And I don't fully understand the nuance of how that number is calculated. It seems pretty substantial because the savings number... It seems pretty substantial because the savings number was, eclipses the proposed budget, depending on the budget estimates you're looking at. The savings number eclipses the proposed budget. And that seems frankly fantastical, uh, incomprehensible to me at this point. Perhaps the dialogue between the board and the gentleman who's going to speak behind me will, will elucidate that. But I, um, I don't know if the reduced recidivism financial number is a comparison between what we're already doing versus the proposal, or the alternative proposal that's been presented at this meeting and many others publicly. I don't understand the comparisons between the different options that are being presented to the county's elected representatives to decide between. So the, to have a, a number like that, that is so fantastically large without any context, seems challenging to make a decision, make an informed decision, make it, uh, as, as our elected representatives. So I hope that some of you will be finding out about that and understanding that better because I do think that that sounds like an important part of this consideration. So again, thank you for the diligence that is being paid to understanding the complexity of a project whose finances will dramatically raise the taxes of all of the taxpayers here in the county, myself included. That is certainly a high bar, a substantial obligation, a responsibility that the seven of you are tasked with. So thank you for stepping up to that responsibility and trying to find financial information. And I hope that the conversation that follows momentarily will, as I said, elucidate the significance of that top-line number, which far and away, by literally orders of magnitude, eclipses all the other things that were described in the brief summary this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Maria Fernandez, 1101 Jackson Street, Omaha. The danger in presenting statistics is that they don't tell the whole story. You need the background information, and especially when numbers are so fantastical, you want to know how you got to those conclusions. The majority of the public is not going to read your report, whether it be thirty pages or three hundred pages. So be very careful when you present statistics because they do not tell the whole picture. My hu- my concern is that a facility like this is going to destroy a whole section of the city that is of significant economic strength to Omaha. And this has been seen over and over and over again in our city. We develop areas that destroy other areas. We block streets that kill neighborhoods. Now, um, like somebody said earlier, I believe it was Constance, we built an adult jail downtown. It destroyed the Leavenworth Thorfare. Now we plan to build another correctional facility in the heart of the city, and it's going to destroy an entire pocket between really vibrant areas of the city that have been developed in the past ten years. So what is our big picture? What's the big picture here? Or do we have a plan? I've been talking about this issue with people all over the city, and I'd like to read you a response from a young pediatrician who does work at the DCYC, and for obvious reasons, she couldn't be here this morning. Since one of our goals is to help the children in DCYC, as a pediatrician who sees these children, let me tell you what they need. They need resources. They need therapy and access to mental health. They need trauma-informed counselors and time to heal. They don't need to be locked in a building downtown. They don't need to be further from their families. Their families also need resources and help. When you're a single mother and you are worried about if you have a place to live and if you can put food on the table, it becomes very difficult to help a child who struggles with mental illness or who has a history of trauma or both, which many of these children do. Also, please consider the police of, the police officers, staff, social workers, therapists, families, physicians, and other providers who are desperately trying to help these children. Some of these kids have done really horrible things. When they are picked up by a police officer, we don't necessarily know which ones are very dangerous. You need to make sure that there are people who are properly trained deciding where these kids go. Our police officers have enough on their plate trying to keep our community safe. It's not fair to ask them to be the triage for where these children go, especially if there's multiple options such as the ones listed. I believe it was Utahali Omaha Home for Boys and Child Saving Institute. Then you are putting all those staff and the police officers at risk if they make the wrong choice. We shouldn't expect them to know what to do with these children. They need to go to a safe place where staff and the children can be safe. We can take the next steps to figure out where they should go. I think in one sentence, what she's trying to say is, "We need to put that thirty-four million dollars we're trying to build a new building with into programming. We need to uplift their neighborhoods. If we want to improve their lot, improve their economic opportunities." We have plenty of desert zones in Omaha. Let's put our money there. Thank you.
Good morning. Roger Garcia, 3635 Owen Avenue here in Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. I'll be concise today. I did get a chance to read portions of the reports and listen to the presentation today. It talks about a reduction in recidivism and increase in diversion pro- uh, programs will save us all these millions of dollars. While the numbers are questionable, let's say that's true. Well, okay, then let's think about this. Diversion and intervention programs are not going to happen in this new building of thirty million plus dollars because the point of diversion intervention programs is that they're upfront and it prevents youth from even going into detention. So it's proving the point that we need to invest more resources, like the previous speaker was talking about, into therapy, diversion, prevention, all of which will lead to a reduction in recidivism and will lead to a reduction, hopefully, in youth going into detention, all true. So the point is, that's true. Let's reduce it, recidivism, focus on that, and not spend an excess of thirty-plus million dollars on a detention center that we don't even want because we're saying we want to reduce kids from even going into detention. So, to me, it's proving the point that we don't need it, right? On top of that, I do find it interesting as somebody who has worked in juvenile justice with Boys Town and in partnership with NFC, back when it was called NFC, et cetera, and has been educated in juvenile justice, that instead of getting scholarly research and practitioners and professors on juvenile justice to come here to make the case, and parents involved in the system and actually have kids in the detention center here making the case, we're having an economist make the case and give us best practices on juvenile justice. While I respect the work of the speaker and his field, being an economist, that's great, it's not juvenile justice, and he's not a scholar in juvenile justice, so why is he over here giving us tips on juvenile justice? So all things to consider. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Last month was democracy. This month, it's mental illness. I'll tell you a little bit about mental illness, and the system is broken, not just the juvenile system, but the HHS system, DD system in the state of Nebraska. Children that are taken out of home, put in out-of-home care. If you go down to the state and try to find out how many different kinds of out-of-home care are there, and they keep changing the names of them. Now you want mental health experts even more involved in our lives. I can tell you about, I was depressed, that's a mental illness. I've known people, other people that are depressed. I've known people with brain injuries. I know people that just have behavior problems, but they're told that that's a mental illness. Now you've got somebody that's going to say, "That kid has a behavior problem. He needs to go down and be assessed." You have child fine starting at age zero. And you know what? Because the best practices of outside experts and foundations around here, and from Minneapolis and Minnesota and wherever, are convincing you guys that they know better than we do. That's a common progressive trick. The experts know better, so they get their way. They get their money. We've heard a little bit about Voices for Children today, and Sherwood Foundation. They seem to have more influence on county, city government than I do as a taxpayer, than any of these people. And you don't see mental ill people, patients here, do you? You don't see kids that are in a behavior problem because of school here. You don't see school resource officers here. You don't see people that have been on some of your commissions, some of your committees, going all the way back to 2014 and before because they weren't able to make a difference because the people that chair the committees think they know better. The privacy laws are a big part of this problem. Now I have a grandson that just aged out, except for the fact that he's in special ed. He turns twenty in a couple of days. He's been in the system since third grade when, because of behavior problems and because of this and that, I finally got on my high horse. Well, you know what? There's been a lot of experts between then and now. They haven't made a difference. He's been arrested just recently. Hopefully Lancaster County is better than here, but if he was arrested here, he might get advantage of all those programs that you're talking about. Problem is, all of the programs that you're talking about have been tried all along. There was child fine when he was born, but they didn't find him until he got kicked out of third grade. And by the way, it was disparity, I guess, because he's half-black. We're tired of that stuff. You're not listening to the people. You're not listening to the patients. You're not listening to the parents, and you're not listening to some of the best practices people that existed before the commission and the Sherwood Foundation study. He didn't want input on any of that. None of the medical experts here wanted input on any of that. I've talked and ate supper with the Rain Man and his father. I've talked and, and had supper and drinks with Elliot Scher from the University of California, San Diego, that was talking about all these issues, facial recognition of behavior problems, that these people are just now starting and asking money for research programs on that were done many years ago. But you don't want to talk to them? There are a lot more experts than these best practices people you're listening to now and that you're shelling money out to for. I recently went to the IEP meeting just before, the same night, right after that meeting, my grandson was arrested. There wasn't anybody there speaking for him, advocating for him. Thank God that police officer had training on how to downsize problems. I went to the IEP, or the IPP meeting yesterday, ISP meeting yesterday. He's in special ed. He's also in DD. To a certain extent, under the law, he is maybe still a juvenile, and he has his own rights right now. His mother wants full custody, full this and that, but she works a full-time job. She cannot...
Thank you, Larry.
...do what's necessary.
Thank you.
She needs help.
Thank you, Larry.
But your privacy law won't let people like me be involved.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Nicole Leclair from Bellevue, Nebraska. And I've been attending these meetings for about a year. These and other meetings around town, public meetings, and I've watched and listened when you all come back from them and say, "Well, we held these county meetings," or "community meetings," as if the community is in support. They are not. I never walk away from any community forum meeting thinking, "Wow, everyone loves this idea. It's amazing." So my question lately has been, "Is this enough beds?" Whether it's sixty-four, forty-eight, forty, the average has been in the eighties. And I don't, I just asked this question Thursday night, and by the way, that was a community meeting on this that had fourteen people. And there was no good answer. Deputy sheriff was there, deputy police officer, no answer. I also asked, "Where and what are the programs?" No answer. And that's often the case. A lot of questions are being brought up without any good answer. I go to these meetings wanting to believe the presentation of HGR. It's a beautiful presentation. I want to believe today's presentation, but give it a few minutes, let us come up, and all the glass starts flaking off. I'm curious how much the study costs. Maybe it was said. I'd like to know. So as far as the reduced transportation costs, I've brought this up before, no longer is your plan co-located. There are three other locations now. So how is that going to be less money? Last I heard, there is no parking for, for families. That's a whole other project. So parking for attorneys and judges, but not families. Also being brought up in the past, not today, is King County in Washington State. And when has, that has been brought up? It's being brought up as if it is built, and it's a wonderful thing and the community loves it. I just want everyone to know, it is not built. It has been in contention for six years. It is being built now. It is on the edge of town. People are not for it. If you look it up, a most recent article, so talking about how everyone's going to become a doctor, lawyer out of this plan, most of these kids coming out of their center are homeless. So I really ask you to slow down, consider the reality, and not a paid-for presentation. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Marty Hosking, 7510 Cass Street. I see this as a really important opportunity for us to, all of us, and not just the commissioners, but the whole city, the whole region, to understand that Omaha's at a, I believe it's at a, a moment of growth, at a, kind of a juncture. We're becoming a bigger city. And I think that in the past, from what I've recognized, my dad's a developer and I've known how things worked as a younger man. I think in the past, that good leadership and corporate and civic leadership, elected and not, has gathered with corporate, civic, and also political leaders to make decisions or to propose ideas for the city and for the region, for the county, that seem to be good. And, and the newspaper would often back that up and, and support it, and, and people would get on board usually with these ideas. I think nine times out of ten, though, if I remember even as a kid, we'd kind of find out what's coming up next, but I didn't get a real clear sense when I was growing up that the citizens really had a lot of participation. And I think a lot of it was, citizens are busy, people are working. We trust our leaders to kind of propose things, do them right, and bring them to the public in a way that makes it a better city and a better county for us. And I think that has fairly worked over the years. There've been mistakes, certainly, but I don't think it works anymore, and I think that's part of the underlying problem here, is I have nothing personal against anybody, any of the commissioners, but I do have a problem when I see that democracy is not fully functioning, especially when it comes to taxpayer dollars and major decisions like this. So on that front alone, I'm very, very concerned at the methodology and the origin of the whole thing. And I'm sorry for the frustration that I'm part of for many of you. I'm sorry to be so frustrating to you, but the thing is, I understand your frustration, but that's going to happen. You're going to have to be frustrated because things are changing, and there's not really a way to, to turn that back. Many of you have a lot of power in this city, but you have to understand, that has to be shared, and there's those of us who are no longer going to just sit back and acquiesce. So that's the one, one area. The second area I want to talk about is, is there are other, there's human, human problems here too, is, is with regards to the kids. I've worked with gang-involved youth in Los Angeles on several occasions. I'm familiar with their situation. I'm familiar with how institutions attempt to help or fail to help them. The best kind of help that I ever saw any of those kids receive was not a building, and it wasn't even a perfect program. Refer to Father Greg Boyle and his work with gang-involved youth in LA. I had the privilege of working with him and seeing that it's very tempting, I think, for any of us, myself and my own small business, to say, a new computer's gonna solve this, a new building's gonna solve this, new carpeting in the office is gonna bring more people in. But I think we really need to take a step back, and I would say that in collegiality with all of you, we do need to start listening to some of these voices that are a little frustrating to you, but that they're, they really have the best interest of the kids in mind. And I'm not saying you don't too, but I think that actually you might be missing some, there might be some blind spots, and we don't wanna make a decision like this that is going to put us in a position where we'll be sorry in a few years. That's the human part. Then it's the planning part is the concern, and this is the last thing I'll say. The way that we're dealing with the development or redevelopment of downtown is not helpful. To have another dead block of, of a detention facility there, you can see on the drawings, it's gonna kill a block there, it kills the whole thing. There's not coming and going on the sidewalks, there's not interaction with the neighborhood. It essentially becomes a blockade for growth in that area, and you all know how much we need to have millennials feel comfortable in our city and places where they'll invest money. We've got a lot of apartments, I'm really, I'm really proposing, and I hope you'll see me, selling condominiums downtown because I think we need multiple forms of investment and equity holding in downtown, not just apartments, although I'm glad to have those. So this would be kind of a step in the wrong direction, even physically for the downtown area. So there's so many questions that I really, really beg you just to take a moment, take a step back, let this go to the vote of the public, let us work on this until next, next year when we can vote on this as, as a community, as a county. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Michael O'Hara, sixty-ten South One Forty-Sixth. I support having a new courthouse and space for the attorneys and oppose building the downtown jail. I wanna start first with a couple of typos. On page four, it refers to a skywalk, and obviously didn't realize how that worked as it doesn't connect the juvenile center with the old courts, they're actually directly connected. A different typo on page twenty-two in table three point eight. Early in the report, it says, all dollars are in 2019, and that one says it's in 2009. I'm not sure if that's a typo because when you look on page twenty-two and table three point eight, on the top right, it refers to twenty nineteen dollars. Also, I'm not sure those dollars have been correctly escalated in terms of the cost of victim crimes, because refers to the adjacent column, which is prior to 2019 and prior to 2019. Going more to the heart of the report, it says it's based on co-location, but there's nothing that really studied specifically co-location. Everything is program-based, so these savings all could be obtained if you have actually the programs, and also it refers to smaller is better. One of the core concepts in economics, and I'm a retired economics professor, is you have fixed cost and variable cost, and all it did was assume when you went from eighty beds to forty beds, you cut your costs in half. That would be extraordinary in an economic process, but those savings are not dependent upon co-location, they're dependent upon programs. Also, it notes that there are bonds, and the bonds have a certain cost. If you were to build this for less, the bonds would be less, and the property tax would be less. Also, there was one, I'm not sure what the source was, but on page four in the right column, third paragraph, it discussed transportation and staffing costs, and goes on to mention that you would be saving two college sheriffs or two county sheriffs with respect to escorting them to court. Well, actually, you're going to have them escorted to court, they just won't be by car. And I didn't see anything that indicated that it calculated a difference in time, a difference in risk, it just said two would disappear, and I don't know of any basis for that. The report estimates some costs, I think quite accurately, like savings you can get from programs, and I would certainly encourage you to invest heavily in those programs because if you increase your savings, you will decrease your property taxes, and if you increase your cost of operations, you're gonna increase your property taxes, and what you're proposing, if we build this downtown jail for kids, is a major property tax increase. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, it's not a-
Any questions with any of these people?
No, we're not, they're just having a chance to make their comment because it's not an action item.
Bob Perrin, eleven one-
Wait a minute, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. I'm gonna ask you to act like an adult and go, so we're not-
Adult dialogue-
Mister Perrin, please go.
It would be free speech, so we'll just plow through and we'll get back to the commercial-
Mister Perrin, if you wanna let your time be used by, we're on the clock, we're on the clock. Mister Perrin, your clock is running.
Okay, I was listening to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, he's on your time.
Okay, fine. Bob Perrin, eleven one, South Thirty-Sixth. The study is impressive, and I'm disappointed that I haven't had a chance to review it yet, so may I ask if we'll get a chance to talk about this after we've had a few days to look at the details of the report and make comments on it? No, you won't.
It's not comments.
Oh, yeah, but we haven't had a chance to read the report, so now I'm supposed to- And there'll be no dialogue. And I don't even have a copy of the report. It wasn't online yesterday that I knew of, so. So I'm disappointed to get a report that I'm supposed to comment on that I don't have access to or haven't had access and enough time to review it. And then the other one is that- That's intentional, by the way. Okay.
I'm gonna ask, hold up.
So, ask Commissioner Rogers-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm gonna ask the diocese to stay in order.
Ask what?
The diocese, please go. Please go.
I don't understand what you said.
They know what I'm talking about, please go.
Okay. So I wanna be able to have a chance to look at this economic study, and then I wanna ask if this study applies only to this particular building downtown project, or if it has to do with programs and value that could be applied to any other location in the community in terms of how we treat our kids. And the next one is that I'm glad we're now doing studies that might help us make a good decision, but let's do one on the economic impact to a downtown and to an entire city for how we use our property. And we don't have anything yet that I know of how the Justice Center, either the attorneys and the courts or, or the Detention Center would impact the downtown property. So let's do a report on that, let's figure out what that's all about. And my suspicion is that a detention center downtown would be destructive and would actually cost us tons of money in terms of tax dollars and use of property, just like the current detention center has done on Leavenworth Street. And, and we know where, this neighborhood is emerging, it's in the process of generating tons of property value increases. And so let's figure out what that loss is going to be when those properties remain parking lots. And the other one, that brings up some of the issues that we haven't addressed yet, and that's parking. We just say, oh, it's gonna happen someplace, some of the services for the kids, oh, it's just going to happen. It's time for us to sit back and look at the whole project and say, what are we doing and what's good about it, what's bad about it, what can we do to make it better? Let's head that direction instead of just piecemealing pieces and trying to backtrack where we're at. It's time to stop, look back, and reevaluate our positions so that we can make a positive step forward for everybody in the community. Do you have any time I can left for anybody else to talk?
No, that's your time. If you're done, you're done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. With that, we will go into time for the commissioners. As stated on the agenda, the commissioners, I have five minutes east to ask Dr. Goss. Because of Dr. Goss, you cutting your presentation, if nobody's opposed, we'll give the commissioners another additional five minutes, which will give them fifteen minutes. So with that, I know Commissioner Craft is requesting.
Yes, most of my questions are not questions, but comments about items made, if I may comment on those now.
Please.
Okay. There seems to be some major misconceptions. The majority of the tax increase will be with the courthouse, not the juvenile detention center. That has to be, absolutely necessity. Now, the other misconception is that the cost of the juvenile detention center, it's gonna be twenty-seven million, not thirty-something, what somebody quoted, and we have a commitment for at least five million dollars toward construction costs, so that's twenty-two million. The next misconception is that the money we're putting in construction can be used for programs. Money that goes to bond issues cannot be used for programs, nor can it be used for salaries. So there seems to be a lot of misinformation coming around, and it started at the beginning when the cost of the juvenile detention center was being declared so expensive. Now, the current correctional center remodeling it was not discussed. Where do we put the youth while we're remodeling it? We cannot have the construction workers intermingling with the youth and run our programs. I've talked to about four people who are familiar with remodeling, and they say, you're really gonna have a problem trying to remodel that building, cordoning off sections, hallways, et cetera. He said, you're gonna have a heck of a problem. He, meaning four different people, one being a female. Now, transportation for years without problems, yes, there have been problems, and we do not need to use a sheriff, we'll use guards, so we'll save money there. Taxation without representation, that happens anyways, we could do it anyways. What we do is design, build, where we contract with somebody who builds the building, and then we rent it from them. Boy, that's gonna be expensive forever, forever, and that doesn't have to go to a bond issue. Or we do a bond, not a bond, a build where we buy it from them by paying them a monthly rent for thirty or forty or fifty years. And that we can do, it's been done. All of, for the public, all of the presentations and information presented at county board meetings and public meetings is online and has been ever since I was a commissioner. The resources, you're going to be closer to families, more accessible to families, because where we're at, certain buses can take you four hours to get there because of transfers and wait times. And if it's cold and windy, you know, twenty below zero, ten below zero, thirty-two degrees, some parents won't want to come out. They might want to, but they can't because of health reasons. Parking, at the current facilities, there is inadequate parking. I understand skepticism toward this program. I read it very closely when it was put online the other night, and I studied it, and I compared it to other programs I've read around the country, and the, the seminars I've been to for the past ten years. I've been to a minimum of two seminars on this every year for the past ten years, and we are doing what is described as best practices by people who are experts in the various The diversion, when a youth is arrested and taken to the youth correctional facility, the, they're incarcerated for anywhere from two hours or six hours to ninety days, sometimes a little longer because they're charged as an adult. But the diversion is to keep them from coming back. Frustrated voices, we are listening. We're listening here, I'm listening at meetings I go to. It's just when somebody can say something in, in five minutes and takes forty-five minutes and keeps repeating this all, it's that I get frustrated. The block and, and the effect on downtown. My business was at Sixteenth and Leavenworth. I was concerned about it when they built the correctional facility, that it would affect my business. Guess what? It didn't. Didn't affect it at all, and every now and then I'll get a question about, what is that building with the concertina or the, the wire on top? But it doesn't bother the people because they know the behind walls. Here, there's not gonna be any concertina wire. We're not gonna have a flashing neon sign saying, hey, this is a youth detention center, beware, because they're contained within walls. Their parents will be coming in through a different door. Let's see, I've got about two hundred other items, I'll run out of time. Okay, hold on. The, the block that we're commandeering, it could be built much like the original data building down on Twelfth and Varnum, took up a whole block just for data service. That doesn't bring information, service to downtown. You know, it's not going to destroy the neighborhood, it's not gonna destroy a block, because we don't know what that block would be used for. We have all these hypotheses based upon limited information, based upon limited study. Now, I do have one question for you, Mr. Goss, because I know, I've read many of your studies over the years. Have you ever been influenced, or the data you resource and publish been influenced by who paid you?
In this case, but, no, I, I would say no, but you, I guess-
I have, I have not noticed it.
No, I, but I have to say, in this case, I actually didn't know who provided the money.
Very good. I didn't know that you didn't know, but I'm glad to hear that, because-
I knew, I knew HGR was involved, I didn't know whether HGR was providing any funds or not.
Good, yeah, 'cause, 'cause I know your integrity. I've watched you ever since you came to Omaha and started being resourced for so many diverse-
About a century ago, I think that was.
I think, I think it was a little over that, but, you know, it just amazes me how the conspiracy theories, the misinformation, the lack of information, the repeated marketing against this program is going.
If, if I may-
Yes.
Is it okay to speak now?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Just to correct to several points that were raised earlier. One thing is parochialism, I mean, the idea that, you know, you're gonna hurt this community and help that community. Well, if that, if you're gonna destroy, and I don't, I, we didn't examine that issue, the blight, that some, but what about moving it, then that would improve the area that it's moving from, I would assume that that's the case. Secondly, the transportation synergy, we looked at the public spending, not private spending, so the fact is that you, you will reduce public spending on the transportation. Now-
And public time.
Public time, exactly. And you may in fact increase the cost of private. We didn't examine the increased cost of private, such as Uta Holly. The timeframe was brought up that said, well, why didn't you use 2018 data? It wasn't available. We used the latest data that were available to us. The, we presented an overview, and the details, I mean, I glossed over it, I, I'm certain no one in this audience wishes for me to go over a thirty-five, thirty-plus page paper. So the details, I assume, will be provided online, and we, we welcome challenges to what we've presented. The discussion ignored, as you've mentioned, Commissioner Craft, the refurbishment cost of the current facility and the difficulty of that refurbishment, that is a major, major issue that we did not examine, and that, that makes, I think, our results more compelling. The fact is that, that the facility as it currently stands would have to be refurbished, and the difficulties of refurbishing it while there are individuals, juveniles in there, in the facility. The idea, also the idea of the cause and effect, those timelines, those numbers that we showed about declining crime rates, we were not arguing there's any connection between the facility and the crime rate. What those were presented to do is show that the demand for a large facility versus a smaller facility, that's, that was the intent there. The co-location and the impacts of co-location, I don't think can be overstated, but I'll, I'll let my colleagues talk about that. The idea that, the discussion about operational costs, we did consider the fact that you, when you reduce the number of beds, you don't half the, by half, you don't reduce the operational cost by half. We did take that into consideration, which was incorrectly stated earlier. Now, the terms of diversion cost, that was a major issue, and I understand that, that's where the big dollars are, and I'd like to, if, if it's possible, have my colleagues, either Scott and Alex, talk about- either Scott and Alex, talk about the diversion issues together.
Scott?
Before you go, it's my understanding that the timer is running at, each individual commissioner would have had a three, five-minute blocks, he started running them just fifteen minutes, so each commissioner will have your total fifteen minutes to question and back and forth. So that's why.
I'm done.
No, no, when, when that ends, so you've got fifteen, you're on the clock, go.
I want to talk about the savings related to the reduced recidivism specifically. What we looked at were, was a methodology which is really a standard, best practice in criminal justice research, which looks at jury awards given to victims of crimes. This also takes into account lost productivity, time away from work, time away from school that might impact wages and earnings, there's healthcare costs, there's mental healthcare costs that, for lagged impact over time. We take those into account with an understanding that if you reduce recidivism, you're also impacting these victim costs. Now, the literature that we looked at, again, these are the landmark studies in this area, coalesced around about twenty-four basis, I'm sorry, twenty-four percentage points greater risk of recidivism for at-risk youths who had been incarcerated versus at-risk youths who had a brush with the law but had not been incarcerated. And what that meant to us when we took the averages across the country for recidivism was that incarcerated youth have a, the potential to be recidivist at about seven out of ten times. And once we put that into our, our models, what we found is, or that, that's how we arrived at the hundred and twenty-one million dollar savings. This also takes into account decreased court costs, decreased law enforcement costs, the transportation costs are excluded from this, of course, because we treat that in another line. But it's really straightforward math from that point forward. And again, within the parameters of existing literature. The one thing that I would also mention and highlight is, there is quite a body of evidence out there that if a youth has a brush with the law, say, between fourteen and seventeen, the research would indicate that it isn't just that one time. Most likely, you're going to have four brushes with the law, or, I'm sorry, four crimes that you're committing per year within that timeframe, and up to six times, six crimes committed per year up to age twenty-five. So that all, it isn't just the one person that was a victim of larceny or fraud, it's those other three or four people that were impacted that go into the calculation also. I hope that addresses that issue. Thank you, sir.
No, you got a minute left in regards to his questioning, if anybody else.
So, there appear to be a lot of concerns about the numbers regarding the savings from reduced recidivism. So with regards to the reduction of recidivism, it is difficult to overestimate the cost to the community implicit in a lifetime of crime of an individual. All of the studies we have looked at, including in 2009, a study on behalf of the Washington State Legislature by Drake and other personnel, that found that well-run diversion programs, in fact, reduced diversion by, on average, up to twenty percent, right, for an individual. And the impact of crime that an individual can have over their lifetime, if you don't save a youth early on, they can commit millions of dollars' worth of crime, there are costs to the victim, there are costs to the ju, justice system, and there are also costs of lost opportunity for the recidivating person. That recidivating person cannot work, cannot be productive, the system has to pay for them throughout a lifetime of crime, and also the victim costs, the people who have, who are injured, who have, have possession from them also suffer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you have fifteen minutes?
Thank you. Dr. Goss.
Yes, sir.
We know each other.
Yes, we do.
We're friends.
We are.
And I, I've actually worked with you on studies in the past.
And we've had a drink or two together, too.
I'm familiar with your work.
Orange juice.
Dr. O'Hara is a peer colleague of yours, is that correct?
He is.
Okay. And I know that he's had an opportunity to review this study and has, I think, made some observations that, you know, I, I appreciate a dialogue with you and with him about, as, you know, two of the leading, if not the two leading economists in the state of Nebraska. First off, you gave your name at the beginning of this, but as you notice, the chairman asks everybody else for their name and address. What's your address?
Fifty-two oh-two Burke Street.
Very good. And I'm going to ask your colleagues as well, because same, same, fair is fair, and we're trying to treat you the same as we would treat the public here today, with the same respect. Alex?
Absolutely. That would be eight-two-zero-nine North Thirty-seventh Street, six-eight-one-one-two.
And your name?
Alex Blaylock.
Very good. Scott?
Scott Strain, one-six-five-six-six Pasadena Circle.
Thank you.
Omaha.
Mine is six-eight-one-three-two on the zip code.
Very good. The proposal that we're discussing here today is a major property tax increase proposal to fund a capital construction project that includes a kids' jail downtown. My, my understanding is that this has now been put on the Public Building Commission agenda for, I believe it's eight-thirty a.m. Thursday in this chamber. It was on the agenda in the Public Building Commission on January twenty-third, where the proponents of this project, including HDR, Burlington Capital, and Peter Kewitt, asked for a hundred and twenty million dollars in bonding authority from the Building Commission. Those are double-A bonds, which the Building Commission has authorized to issue, and they were denied on a three-two vote by the Building Commission. Now, on Thursday, this Thursday, they're going to come back. On January twenty-third, they were denied that proposal. On January twenty-fourth, Commissioner Kraft sent us all an email that said he wanted to be on the Building Commission in the spot that Commissioner Boyle sits in. Commissioner Boyle voted against the bond issue on January twenty-third. So within twenty-four hours, the game was afoot to reshuffle the Building Commission and take a no vote and replace it with a yes vote. Under that threat now, we will go forward with the Building Commission, and this has been made clear to Commissioner Boyle that he will be replaced on the Building Commission, and Commissioner Kraft will be put in his position to do the bidding of the private corporation that wants this construction project to go forward and increase all of our property taxes. So that's the background of what's going on here today. This commercial is to enhance the chances of that private corporation getting its authorization on Thursday for a hundred and fourteen million dollar bond issue that will increase all of our property taxes. So when it comes to your part in this, and believe me, I, having worked with you and known you for a long time, I have nothing but respect. Understand that whether you were told this or not, you're up here to enhance the steamroller effect of this sales job to get the Public Building Commission, and hopefully, in their opinion, Commissioner Boyle, to change his vote and to approve the bond issue on Thursday at eight-thirty a.m. in this chamber. When you say, as you just did, I think I'm quoting you, "We will welcome challenges to this study," that's what I, I would hope that we could have a dialogue about here today with you and Mr. Dr. O'Hara, your peer, relative to just a few of the, of the items on this agenda. Dr. O'Hara, would you join Dr. Goss, please? This has a few items that, in addition to the property tax increase, I'm curious about. This co-location issue, Dr. Goss, that you point out, is co-location of the children with the court services and the allied services of the juvenile court apparatus, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Currently, the children that are in detention are held at Forty-second and Woolworth Street, the Douglas County Youth Center, and the courts are here in this complex in the Hall of Justice. And so you're, you're taking the, the kids, putting them in the kids' jail downtown, and co-locating them with the construction of a new courthouse annex. But my question to you is, as this has developed, and certainly in the most recent hearings that you heard us discuss earlier, the proponents of this project went out of their way to say, children are going to be located, not just in the new kids' jail cell block downtown, but at Uta Holly, at the Child Savings Institute, and at the Home for Boys, to name just three not co-located locations, not part of this campus. So if that were the case, I mean, we would have more locations for these children to be located at than we currently do, which is the Douglas County Youth Center at Forty-second and Woolworth, and more transport costs. Those locations would have to be secure, they'd have to be licensed by the people who do licensing for secure facilities, who are authorized by the state to detain individuals. Would those costs be factored into your proposal here? Were those costs part of, when, when you were talking about the, the savings from co-location, were those costs factored in?
Several points. You, we looked at public costs.
I'm sorry?
We looked at public costs, the public, the cost to the taxpayer.
Correct.
And you failed to acknowledge the fact that the, the refurbishment of the current facility, now, we didn't examine that, would be of equal cost, or at least certainly involve a tax increase as well, potentially a tax increase. But the co-location, those would be private costs, private transportation costs, and that would be not, that was not part of our study.
Oh, I see. But these children, the same population that we're dealing with, who are detained at the Douglas County Youth Center, would be detained at whatever facilities we're talking about. This is the same population of children.
A diversion program, I, not detained, I wouldn't call it detained, it's not detention, it's diver, a diversion program, which is significantly different.
I see. So that diversion would occur whether the youth center is at Forty-second or the kids' jail is built downtown? That diversion is a program.
Our responsibility was to look at current status, future status, future proposals. It's not currently being done. So we're looking at, we examined what could be done, what will be done, what's promised to be done, and perhaps you, it could be done at the current facility. I, I, we did not examine that very issue, though.
Okay. The operational savings that you're talking about, those, the operation of our Douglas County Youth Center is about eight or nine million dollars now.
Eight to nine, yes.
And so, the proposed kids' jail downtown, what would the operational cost of that be per annum?
Scott, could you?
I think we calculated it as having about a fourteen percent.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you want to get some mic? I'm sorry?
I think we calculated it at, having about a fourteen to fifteen percent annual savings.
Is that a dollar amount that you could give?
Of the eight-point-nine percent.
I'm sorry?
So about one-point-six million.
Okay. So what would the operational cost be of the kids' jail downtown?
Well, we estimate it'd be about seven million dollars then.
Okay.
Seven to seven-and-a-half million.
Very good. And then, the big number, the savings due to recidivism of one-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars, how do you arrive at a number of, like, one-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars with any level of certainty?
In economics, there is no certainty, as you know. So we, we're, there's always what we call an error term, and, and if, if you're, an economist without an error term is an engineer, we're not, you know, that's.
Very good. Now, now, no, I, I appreciate the candor.
But, 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 go ahead, yeah, reverse that.
No, I was just going to say, if, if, you know, you're saying that that's your best guess.
No, no, I didn't say guess.
Okay.
Okay, this is based on what we call a meta-analysis, that's an analysis, as you know, of an analysis. We looked at studies, one study, we looked at Drake's study out of Washington, which examined five-hundred-and-forty-five different studies, and we took, we examined that, and based upon these other studies, what would likely be the outcome from this facility?
Thank you.
What would be the likely savings?
I appreciate that, thank you. Now, Dr. O'Hara, taking these in reverse order, your analysis of the methodology used by Dr. Goss and company to reach the recidivism one-hundred-and-twenty-million, one-million-dollar savings number?
I would have basically done the same thing. As Alex said, it's very difficult to overestimate the savings from avoiding recidivism. My challenge was that, that recidivism is not.
Could you get closer to the mic?
That, sorry, that recidivism is not necessarily tied to co-location. Any place, any program that gives you that reduction in recidivism will give you those savings, and if you were to use the current location and do the programs, as was stated, that are not being done but which are going to be added, you'd get those savings.
So basically, whether or not any construction were had, you could have those savings in the macro society due to factors unrelated to the construction of, of this construction project that they're proposing?
Correct.
But I mean, Mr. O'Hara and I are both not experts in the area of what could be done.
I appreciate that.
Psychological programs. And also, you're ignoring the fact that there's a refurbishment cost that would be required, and, and as, as, as Commissioner Kraft pointed out earlier, you're talking about a very difficult refurbishment process.
Right, right. Dr. Goss, I'm not ignoring that. If you'd been at any of the score of public hearings that I personally held on this issue, you would have seen that we had very specific numbers on that, so I'm not ignoring that. You just may not be aware of that, I'd be happy to provide you with that information. The other two items, quickly, if you could address, the transportation savings and the operational savings, how do you view the methodology that arrived at those numbers?
I couldn't see how they came up with transportation savings, because as I've been following this for quite a while, I've never seen any transportation amounts, so I'm curious if transportation cost data was provided to Professor Goss and his crew.
And the answer is yes, in the sense that there, that each time youth are brought down, and I'll let Alex talk about it more, or Scott, one of the two.
Well, they can, but not on my time. Go ahead.
Oh, 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 I, he can speak on your time, but I can't.
Yeah, he's speaking on my time, and you're speaking on my time, but your whole paid team isn't speaking on my time, as you can see, the light's on.
Okay, got you.
But thank you.
No, but there, but there are, I think, two sheriff's deputies that are required.
We are well aware of what the transportation cost. We've gone into that in length at hearings that you weren't at, but we'll, we'll be happy to invite you to our next public hearing. The, the point that I'm trying to get at is, these cost savings, Dr. O'Hara, are very, very speculative and not necessarily tied to this construction proposal that they're asking for over a hundred-and-twenty billion dollars of authority to do.
Since the detainees will have to be escorted by a person of appropriate security rank, I anticipate there will not be savings, and since they're in the courthouse, they're going to be sheriffs.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And then, this whole thing will result in a substantial property tax increase, is that correct?
Yeah. You can not, not do a property tax increase and spend this kind of money.
Okay. And using the, using the.
What kind of money?
Dr. Goss, in a minute, using the financing mechanism proposed here of the Bu, Public Building Commission, there'll be no vote of the people on this property tax increase, is that correct?
Yes.
So, a speculative study paid for by us, and I, my last question to you, Dr. Goss, was, how much were you paid for this study?
I, I can't quote, I think it was something, I, I, at this point, I haven't been paid, just.
Oh, my gosh!
I think the money, the number was fifteen thousand, I would ask Mr. O'Hara who's paid for his.
I'm not saying that, that, that's not a reasonable price, I just, it's public record, and we're just making a record.
Yeah, fifteen thousand, I think it's fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Very good, thank you.
I believe that's correct.
I've been a pure volunteer.
We thank you for that.
The point is that this is going to be a stake in the heart of our central business district, like it was when we put the correction center where it is, go over and look at that block, going to be a property tax increase for everybody without a vote of the people.
Someone is mute.
Thank you. Our light's on.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, a couple things. First, Dr. Goss, all the commissioners, and I'll speak for all of them, were way over our head when we debate with you on your study and what you put in your study, okay? I really respect. I really respect all of your work, and read it quite often, and luckily get it for a long while. No matter what this board does, there will be a tax increase, because, as it was stated in Fort Omaha, at one of the town hall meetings, and I attended all three 10 days ago, and it was stated by one of the opponents of this, the cost of the remodeling that he estimated was $27 million, and our net cost so far is $22 million, as Commissioner Kraft said, for the youth center. We know we have to build more courts, we have to build that Hall of Justice, so we're talking really about the same numbers, dollar numbers, to the taxpayers, no matter what this board decides.
Well, there is the contribution, I think there's a contribution from the Sherwood Foundation that reduces the taxpayer.
Yes, and that's why I stated our cost is 22 million.
Yes, correct.
Versus a 27. The one thing I'm fairly good at is Commissioner Boyle gives me credit for his numbers, but anyhow, I'm not sure I am, but I'll accept his compliment. So that's a real fact that hasn't come out, because we're spending money for this, we're gonna spend it no matter what, because, and Mr. Riley's sitting here, and he knows, and as the county attorney, they need more space, we need more courts, and they're not available with what we have. So we can go out and lease them and spend money forever, or we can get a facility and have it for the next 50 years or more, in my opinion. The other thing, we talk about out there, you know, the golf course and that sort of thing. I've been there with the parents in recent weeks, Commissioner Kraft and others have been there in recent weeks with parents. There isn't, the only view they get of the golf course is when they're driven in there. They're not looking out windows or going out to the grounds of that current youth center. So that's a fact, and there have been parents at all the town hall meetings that I attended that were supportive of this and talked about three bus transfers to get there, as City Council President Ben Gray has talked about. So, you know, I just want to be clear that no matter what this board does, there would be a tax increase. And let me also state this fact, if we go to a vote of the people, and I haven't had anyone explain it to me, and they voted down, what do we do then? Do we go out and try to lease buildings somewhere for courts, and try to figure out how do we remodel those buildings, get the security and all the things necessary? We would have to be stagnant, and the cost, if we're leasing, is gonna be more than what the cost would be on the proposal to do what we're doing. And that's what we looked at. And I've stated it before, and that'll, in my comments, the fact is, the reason I'm supportive of this is talking to others, and being in other communities, and looking at it, and being with families right here, that this is the right thing for the youth, and that's what this is really about. It's not about the commissioners wanting to build a building, or see some kind of nice structure, or that sort of thing. It's to really do the right thing for the youth, and that includes the courts and all of it being in one place. And I'd say to you that in Minneapolis, St. Paul, you've got development going on around it, in the downtown area with the new stadium and condominiums and so on, right, in downtown where the youth detention center is in Minneapolis. And you've got the restaurants and all that in St. Paul that is, it right downtown. So I thank you for your study and the comments your colleagues have made.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. It's my time, so I don't care who talks.
Okay. There's, this is not a homogeneous population, in other words, those individuals who are in the, in the center, and those who are in diversion programs, so the idea that somehow they're the same, so the transportation back and forth, you're not talking necessarily about the same individuals. These individuals are in diversion programs, those in diversion programs are those individuals that stand a high chance of not repeat offending, high chance of achieving higher education, a high chance of being successful members of our society, so they're not the same.
And that's exactly what this is about, to stop that revolving door. And I appreciate your statement.
And Alex and I come at this, I like to say, when we were approached in this, my, my view was lock them up. And, you know, in other words, I'm a pretty conservative person, and I found about, you do the examinations, that's not working. Locking them up, in other words, the idea that, that everybody's the same, if you, if you, if you have, if you're a vandal, if you do vandalism, is not the same as burglary, which is not the same as manslaughter, so.
I'm gonna ask one more question, because I've seen Alex nodding his head, and it's not gonna be how much money you make, because I think that's inappropriate. I do want to ask you what your background is.
Absolutely. So I am actually a, I have a Bachelor of Arts in Economics from Creighton University, and have worked with Dr. Goss here for about four years now, right?
Four years, yeah.
Right, four years with his company. And one thing that I was thinking of as, as we were talking about the, how unproductive it is to default to locking up kids, is what other places have accomplished, right? For example, King County, Washington, they may not have a new building at this point in time, but they have gotten their average daily population down to about 51. The population of them is maybe three to four times that of Omaha, right? And we're proposing about 40 beds, right, or for the, for the facility?
Sixty-four now, but.
Say again?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, right. So.
Average daily population, 40.
Right. So it's, it's not anywhere out of the realm of possibility, and in fact, is rather conservative compared to what peer institutions have accomplished.
So, I'll put you in another spot. And that, those numbers, King County, the same thing in Minneapolis with, you know, twice the population, more than twice, and their numbers are down in the 40 and 52. And it's not something in the water that's changing those numbers. What do you think of what we're doing here? And be candid with us, you're a young person, and I really respect and love how you guys, as young people, ladies and gentlemen, are all connected. So go ahead and tell us.
I've actually had the privilege of personally visiting the facility in one of, the current youth facility, in one of my classes, interestingly enough, for philosophy class. We got to go down there and meet personally with the, with the incarcerated persons there. And I think that the construction of a new facility is absolutely what, you know, these, these kids would deserve, right? And the inclusion of things that would give them more opportunity, right, in their lives. I mean, in a way, it's kind of striking, because at least I feel that they're not so much different in any way, you know, from me or my peers or my fellow students, or I just graduated from Creighton University. And I just find it rather interesting that if only these kids would have more of an opportunity, be given more of a chance by, by us doing the right thing, by giving them the facilities that they need, by giving them the programs they need to divert them to a more productive life, I think personally that that would be the absolute right thing to do.
Well, I really appreciate your comments and participation in this, and may want to ask you other questions at another time, and may want to get your number.
And importantly to that, a lot of folks are asking, well, why can't it not be done at the current facility? In other words, if you, the problem is, of course, you're reducing the day, average daily population, so that the, the economies of scale and so forth are just not there right now. And again, I don't mean to beat the drum again, but refurbishment costs are quite significant, and the leasing we, that, that you've talked about, leasing space is more expensive than owning space, at least for governments.
Well, and that refurbishing, that's why the cost is higher. And when you start refurbishing, and I'm involved in 13th Street, on both sides of the street, the old Bohemian Cafe and so on, you don't always know what you're finding when you start, and there are more costs, because you're not with a clear sight. But I greatly appreciate the comments of everybody, whether they're opponents or not. I really respect that very much. Thank you.
Dr. Goss is still, Kristen Borgson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I basically just want to say thank you for the information. My goal all along has been to serve our kids and our families better than how we have in the past. And we looked at, and we have studied, and we have been a part of, many of us commissioners in watching how communities and counties have done this across the country, and this isn't anything new. It's new here, but it's not new across the country. We have also heard that we are moving without information, and now we have additional information. And somebody made the comment about how we are frustrated. I'm not frustrated with what all of your input is, because you've, for the most part, been very respectful in giving it to us, but what's frustrating is, is that when there are mistruths thrown out there, over and over and over, and then when we do correct it, it just comes back over and over. But the citizens are the ones who have said, as well as us, is we want to be able to give some good data to back what we're doing here, and we're giving it, and then we're knocked for doing it. And so that's what's frustrating, and it's a moving target. If somebody says do A, and we do it, well, then we're knocked, because now they've come up with B, and we haven't done B. And so we keep moving along with them, we are listening, and I can't, I can't believe somebody would say we're not. There may still be disagreement at the end result of where we do this and how we do this, but we are listening. I feel we have listened very well and are trying to give the information that you all want us to give you. And again, my three goals in this project, from the very beginning, I look through the lens, my own eyes, of my family. If what we are currently doing, if I would be okay if my child, my grandchild, my niece, my nephew, whatever, friend, had a child in the system, would I be okay with how everything is? And if I say no, that I wouldn't want my kid, blah, 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 going through this, then why is it okay for our community's kids and families to have less than what I think it should be? So my goal has always been, how do we improve the system? How do we, one, first of all, keep kids out of the system? Two, if they're in there, get them out as fast as possible with programs and services for them and their families. And three, once they are out, make sure that they don't return. And in the men, in the meantime, as we're forming this, we're designing it again with their best interest at heart, and I can sit here and tell you that that has, I have never wavered for that. Bottom line for me are the kids and the families and what we do. And the more information, and again, thank you for the information, some can poke holes in it, that's fine, but thank you for the information, because we have more information to go on as we continue to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Other things on the leasing issue, other things equal, a bond issue is cheaper than leasing, because of the exclusion from the tax benefits of a bond issue. So that's, that's often ignored, I mean, leasing is more expensive, dollar for dollar.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'm the culprit that voted no on the building commission, and I did so after searching my conscience and considering what I thought needed to be done. There's another vote coming up on the building commission, and I had asked that the votes be split again, so that I could do the same thing again. And I have wrestled with this like really no other issue that I have wrestled with in years. I've asked questions, I have been trying to get on the building commission for several years, because I felt that some planning had not happened, we had not, we lost opportunities to buy land near our buildings, though we controlled our general area, we, I think we made a mistake, we built the parking garage so close and landlocked us. We had an offer for, from a philanthropist organization to, for a half a million dollars, if we build the garage next to the rows and get a walkway, we didn't take advantage of it. We didn't buy the building that's been a subject of condemnation, where we could have got it for $100,000, we didn't do that. We didn't buy the Keyline building when it was for sale, we could have moved all the lawyers over there and closed the first floor and done a walkway to the building, we didn't do that. So when I got, I finally, a vacancy occurred, and so I went to the chair, Mary Ann Borgson, and I did get appointed, and I said, let's get this thing going in the courthouse, we've got Tom Riley with people jammed in the rooms, and I walked through there with some people before, and it is true, it's really packed on people. And the county attorney, I believe, has five offices around the area, which is not ideal. Anyway, so my suggestion was just by the MUD side, when very quickly what happened was, we ended up working with Mike Annie's group, which is a good group that worked with the cancer center, we ended up without any selection, we ended up with KiWIT and HDR, which is, they're both very fine, but in my book, we didn't bid, we probably should have, county attorney said it was okay what we did. A 501(c)(3) was set up, which really takes the place of the county board acting, which is very awkward, and I would not vote for that again. And I'd like to have them come down here on county board days when they meet, and so they're on television and public, more public than they are, they do meet in 903, but I, I'd like to see them down here. In any event, I didn't win on all those, and when the MUD turned down a two and a half million dollar offer, I said, let's, let's take them up on their $6 million price, and I was told, no, we're not going to negotiate anymore with them. Well, of course, that's what we ended up doing, and in the meantime, we bought another building for two and a half million and moved the, the housing authority over to the library and removed all the lawyers that were there, so now we have a vacant building across the street. But those are all things that happened that were pretty, I don't know, not even ancillary to the issue of the children. We have a, there's an article that I want to read just part of, what has happened in San Francisco, they are pushing to close their facility. The supervisors believe that no kids should be in jail, as they say, and I want to read some comments from one of the supervisors, her name is Hillary Ronan, and she said, I've been inside juvenile hall, and it is a jail like any jail in this country, she said. Kids do not get outside, they do not breathe fresh air very often, they are locked in a tiny room by themselves over 11 hours a day, many are suffering from severe mental health disorder, it is punitive in nature. Ronan added that the facility does not prioritize rehabilitation, and we should not be jailing kids, it's that simple. The proposal that she's supporting calls for a creation of a small rehabilitative, non-institutional place of detention for young offenders who are required by state law to be in a secure facility. That's where we should be headed, absolutely beheaded. And on the way, interestingly enough, San Francisco has had some drops in the amount of felonies, and we're, we don't have the kind they do. In San Francisco, they, from 1990 to 2019, they had an 87 percent drop, in Douglas County, from 2007 to 2017, we've had a 60 percent drop. And also in population, ours has dropped 41 percent since 2007 to 2017. We're heading in the right direction, and I'm not sure it's anything that we've done, maybe we just fell into this. But I do want to mention some really positive things that I, I really am surprised by and very pleased. One is a woman by the name of Lisa Utterbeck, who works for Omaha Public Schools. There was a meeting sponsored by the county at St. Robert Bellarmines, and the same time there was one being held at Clare Methodist Church, and I went to the one at Clare Methodist, and it was really, Pastor Cavett over there is a character and a real leader. And so there were probably 25 people there, mixed audience, some pretty people I've known for a long time who are not bashful about speaking out and telling me to settle down and be quiet at times, so they're good friends, I enjoy their comments as much as I do Krista Dootes.
I would have preferred those, too.
You would like that, yeah. Anyway, the meeting was supposed to be 6:00 to 7:30, and at 9:15, I left, and I heard Ms. Utterbeck speak, the first thing out of her mouth was, she said, my mother was a criminal, and I spent all of my childhood in foster homes and everything that goes with it. Wow. And then she started talking about what she's doing in OPS to interrupt behavior, which is really where I think we need to be, and so many of you have alluded to that, too. We need to do something way before these kids are at our doorstep. And she has started a project that is so, I'm gonna really. get permission, I hope, from the chair to bring her down here to speak. She has a program put together that, that the trigger is absences. When a child is absent three times, okay, that's a flag. What in the hell is going on? And they go out to the house, they see what's going on, the mother, father, somebody's no there, they're young kids. All these things have unraveled. They don't have washers and dryers. They don't have anything, no food. All these things unravel, and that leads to bad behavior. And they look, they find this through truancy, if they are in school, now some even aren't in the school. So I've wrestled with what to do. And interestingly enough, the story is this, that I have told people I'm voting no, I've told people I'm voting yes, and that's because I am ripped apart by this issue. And my conscience is telling me to vote no. My practicality, because of the good improvements, is telling me yes. We've got Uta Hali on board, we've got Omaha Home for Boys, we've got Child Saving Institute. Recently, I was at a ballgame, and the coach came over and told me that he is going to be working with Sherwood on a mental health program, and he has a PhD in that area. He's also, his kids on the same team with my grandson. So I found that out at a ballgame on the field, and so I thought, "My God, this is wonderful." Now, it's all starting to move in the right direction. But then we still have the facility being built downtown, and the area that I think needs at least, I mean, our present adult jail is enough of a drag. I know that business owners around that area find needles in their bathrooms, needles in their parking lots. A lot of things happen that, because of that facility. And having this facility where it is, I really still have problems with it. I think what we should be doing is building a courthouse and space to expand, because in 20 years, that's going to have to be expanded, and we should have a facility right and ready to go. I think that's what we need to do. I've pushed to have, if it has to be downtown, put it across the street on 18th and Harney. We've got to do something with that building that's gone. We need to make sure we don't injure the building on the corner, that we respect that space, go high enough up, all that kind of thing. That's an absolute no. It just, I get patted on the head a lot, you know? And, no, we're not going to do that. So, and the interesting thing is, I mean, there's all these issues about transportation, which I can see, but certainly, if they can do this orbit system, we can figure out how to get a bus to go up and down 42nd Street and serve the parents and grandparents in North and South Omaha that need to get where they need to get. Brad Alexander, the head of the youth center, has not been involved in this anyway publicly that I know of. And Mark LaFleur, who's also a very qualified leader out there, as far as I know, they have not been involved, and I don't know why. I'm one of seven on this board, and it's not my position to bring him in, but I would like to know. I've talked to him, and he's got some really great opinions, but those haven't been shared. And some people have asked me, "Why isn't he around?" When we did the cancer center, Dr. Cowan was there all the time. And I said, "Well, in Douglas County, we kind of have a caste system. I think he's at the bottom of the list." You know, he just, directors are treated differently in the county, and I don't know why he's not there, but probably had the feeling he wasn't supposed to speak up. I really can't speak. We have to ask him, I guess. So come Thursday, if I, after I've told everybody, as recently as yesterday on the county board that I'm voting yes, if my heart says, you know, I still have concerns and I vote no, it really won't make a lot of difference because there's another meeting on June 15th, and I don't know when I go off the board, but I definitely am going to be replaced. Commissioner Kraft has asked to be appointed to my seat. He's a yes vote. And so the politics of it is that I go, he comes, and the vote is yes. So, and I, and you know, if I vote yes, they'll probably feel, "Well, we shouldn't reappoint him because it looked like a payoff." So I really don't, whatever happens, happens. But that's the politics of it, and that's life. I enjoy being on the building commission, but I understand that penalties occur when you, when you do jump on the bed often and ask too many questions that cause heartburn. So I understand that. I've, that happened to me before. One of the things that we failed to do was to really, you know, look at accurately that we've had no alternative. There's been no alternative offered in hard figures. And, you know, Commissioner Morgan is very much involved in renovation and knows these figures upside and down, and he compares the cost of the Blackstone renovation to the cost of renovating the juvenile center. And I, I'm a layman, but I don't think it'd be that high. And I don't know what, you know, what would be done. In any event, I really regret that we could not get a true alternative to say, "This one works, this one doesn't," or "This one's not so bad, maybe we should incorporate some things." We never, we never explored that, and I think that was a big mistake. I wish we had done that. There are some people, you know, who came by today, you know, Marty Hoskins, who's been in touch with me quite a bit. I respect him a great deal. He has really, just about everything, everything he said, not just about, everything he says I agree with. Maria Fernandez, who's a businesswoman from, used to own the Indian Oven. She now lives in the old market. She's got good ideas. And Dr. Constance Myerendorf as well, she worked here at the county for quite a while. She's very engaging and knows what she's doing. And of course, Dr. Scott Williams. They all are, they're people I respect. I'm getting a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls. Up until 2:00 in the morning, I was getting calls, and finally I had to shut off my phone. I leave it on because of an emergency situation perhaps, but I did turn it off after the calls kept coming in. And I don't, that doesn't bother me that much. I mean, that's the way it is. If your phone number's out there, that's the way life is. I do think that San Francisco's on the right track. I think that Portland, Oregon's on the right track. I think the things that Maryann Borges said are right on the right track, the things she talked about, what we're trying to do with children, is absolutely right. And I think if we think it through, it will lead to what San Francisco wants, and that is, you know, a creation of a small rehabilitative, non-institutional place of detention for young offenders who are required by state law to be in a secure facility. Let's head for that. And I'm still fighting with my conscience about how I'm going to vote. So it doesn't really make any difference. So maybe I should just do what my conscience says. I think I should. So anyway, Mark will have the final vote on it. And too bad I don't have a baton to hit you over the head. No, I mean to pass on to you, no. But that's the way life is. So as a practical matter, I've gotten all these things, vote no, vote no, vote no. If I do, I'm going to be replaced, and probably if I vote yes, I'll be replaced. So life can be interesting. But it's been a privilege to serve on the board. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I want to just correct a couple of things. Dr. Goss, thank you for coming. I'm probably the only one up here that's had the privilege of struggling through your class and NBA program.
You didn't struggle.
And so
You taught me some things.
With that, I just want to say, and if anytime you want to fill in with something I'm saying, go ahead. I think, you know, I think fact would say at some degree that I've been here 30 years, and ever since I arrived, that detention center has been there, the adult detention center, the adult jail. And, you know, fact would just say differ that, you know, that stop development, you know, there's apartments, condos, everything there, you know. All due respect to Ms. Jamrazie. I mean, the jail was there, and she chose to move her business there by the jail. So it didn't cease them from coming. And I'm very sensitive to that to some degree. And I, you know, want to know, people to know that I hear you on that. I mean, the statement was made, but nothing proves that. The statement was made that some people don't know how we got here. Well, I can tell you how we got here. I mean, 10 years ago, the board made a concentrated effort to try to reform this system. And it got here by intentionality in trying to do some things. And some people have disagreed along the way. Some people have come aboard. Some people still disagree. But I think the concept has always been to reduce that number down, you know, with partnership from the state. There has been, you know, this comment about, and I just want to make this fact, I can't speak for anybody personally, but, you know, there's been no discussion about replacement. It hadn't had to be discussed. If you're in a political environment, people know dates. But I refuse to discuss that to some degree. Nobody said anything. Things will go where they are, but the app, the point being made or insinuated, that things have been on the hook, there has been nothing talked about in that office. It was said in the paper, I can say that wholeheartedly, honestly. So, you know, that, that's just not there. This conception that by law, but there is no law that says you have to have a public vote on capital projects. That's just another way of financing projects. If there is a law, please let me know, because we're about to make a decision here in a couple of dates with a budget that's more than $120 million, and we made this vote for 15 years since I've been here, and that's more than this amount of money, and we haven't done the public, to ask a public vote on it. You know, the state legislature has done a rehab project on their, on their Capitol building, and I know it's more than $120 million. And they didn't ask the state of Nebraska to vote for it. There's no magic rule. You have representation in people here, and this is a way to finance that, that we are using, that's been used in the county of Lancaster for over 10 times. I'm told 30, but I'm going to say 10 to be conservative. So I just say that to say, you know, Dr. Goss, I'm assuming when you, and I just want to clear this up, you weren't insinuating with co-location that co-location is going to make everything go down. I mean, I read the report to say co-location is a benefit to some things with transportation, not that co-location was tied to everything else that comes with the system.
That's correct.
And I say that because people are talking about this building like if there's no programs. For the last week, we've talked extensively about programs. We need to talk about the building to some degree. The building was a place to start because that's what was needed. And there's going to be, programs are going to start, the program issue will start in July because of the state law that was passed, and people are trying to deal with that. There's been points made here about confusion about three different facilities. There's one joint facility, which is a detention center for youth and a courthouse. People meshing Uta Hali of was the point that you did, you made, Dr. Goss, is that Uta Hali is a service paid for by probation. The state pays for that. CSI, the state pays for that. The only thing out of this that we're paying for is Charles Drew and the portion of that that comes with the Creighton, UNMC, and the project that we have going there. That is the only thing that comes paid for to some degree. You know, there's been comments made, we were at a conference last week, we talk about Ramsey County, but it is a goal that's there to meet. Ramsey County is a county that is comparable in our size, about the 500,000 range that we are. They had six people in there last week, and they're planning to close that down. And basically, they're closing it down because they are putting alternatives in place, and everything we've talked about has been alternatives. Even a plan that, you know, Sherwood has said publicly that they are going to commit a lead gift on a upgraded mental health facility that's needed to some degree. If this building is fortunate enough to move forward, it's three years before it's built, and I think we adequately, adequately get there. This thing, you know, the numbers game, I've been on the view where I may have questioned numbers, but, you know, there's several people coming up and, you know, putting in the doubt these numbers and putting wholeheartedly investment in other numbers. I think the only thing that people are asked to do is take in this information, and we tried to go to put some more meat on the bones of the decision. You know, there's comments made about experts, and Dr. Goss has his expertise, and there's other people that we've listened to for this expertise, and I think we've come to the decision based on the information that we got. I'm not an expert in the juvenile field, but I feel very comfortable with my understanding of flowing with what's what, and there's still a lot that I need to know. And I assure everybody, no expert, I'm not listening to an expert without understanding this, this thing intimately and sitting down and understanding where it could go. And so this plan to go where the group wants to go is not ambitious. We're behind. Other, other counties and states have been here. They've done this, and there's no way on earth that Douglas County has a magic gold dust, that we have something that's not attainable that anybody else can do. So, you know, I just say that in respects to the fact that, to just reiterate what Commissioner Borges said, people have been listening, and I think it's fair to say that. We've listened and listened, and, you know, you all can be where you are, but I feel very confident, and I feel very, very convicted that this is the best thing for the kids and families here. And it's a long time that we all should commit to it to make sure it's there. Dr. Goss, if there's anything you want to add to close out, you can use the rest of my time to do it. And if there's anything loose, do you think needs to be obtained?
Anybody other questions? I'd just be more than happy to address any questions.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it here on the time, so if you don't got anything to do on this time, I'm gonna keep it. Appreciate your time, Dr. Goss.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, Dr. Goss.
With that, it's 12:05. I'll be promptly back here at 12:10 to regain. If you need to use the bathroom, anything, please do, and we'll recess in five minutes.
And while we are in recess, I want to make a clarification. In San Francisco, they do not incarcerate youth charged as adults in their youth center, which is why they can achieve zero beds.
Thank you.
I'll also clarify, kids in jail who fail to appear, drives up our population. So it's a two-edged sword, so, yeah, well, that's the difference. So be truthful on this and accurate. You got it. I know you weren't intentional in this meeting, but you did. I know you weren't intentional in this meeting, but you did.
We're going to move to, uh, item B on, uh, presentation, on five in presentations, the presentation of the Hefty Energy Bag Program. Dale Gubels from First Star Fiber. Mr. Gubels, okay?
Did you do the roll call?
No.
Good, Claire. Good afternoon, my name's Dale Gubels. I'm the CEO of First Star, uh, First Star Fiber. And my address is 1211 Court Drive, Papillion. I was asked to come answer some questions about the Hefty Energy Bag Program. Maybe the quickest way to talk about this is to...
Give it to her, give it to her.
This is a program that, uh, we were, uh, aware of when they did a pilot program in California a number of years ago. And it seemed to do something that had done a problem for our recycling facility. We deal with a lot of materials that we wish could be recycled and a lot of people do wish they could be recycled. So they end up throwing them into their recycling bin. And these wishful recyclers, we want them to do the right thing, of course, but, uh, these are materials that are listed on this, a little flyer, that cannot be recycled per se. But if they go into the Hefty Energy Bag, which is an orange bag made by Reynolds and, uh, can be purchased at virtually any of the grocery stores now, that material, uh, once it's in the bag, it's a lot simpler for us to pull off our, uh, sort line and then we bail it. And we're looking at ways to utilize those materials in a more economical and environmentally sensitive way, including, um, we're investigating the possibility of putting a pyrolysis system at our facility. Pyrolysis would heat these materials in the absence of oxygen, turns it back into a petroleum-based product. That petroleum product can be either used for heating oil, diesel, or actually it's also the first stage, it could be refined and made back in plastics again. And that approach would take about, um, the system we're looking to put in, it's about, uh, 6,000 tons a year of a variety of otherwise unrecyclable plastics that we could, uh, convert into, uh, several thousand, uh, gallons of diesel or heating oil. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about, uh, the program. When the city, uh, moves to carts, uh, one of the, the, uh, things that, uh, is part of that program, that was part of the RFP, um, the hauler, whoever they end up selecting, will be working with Dow and Reynolds and, uh, providing a starter kit, if you will, uh, about four bags of the energy bags and information about how the program works. That'll go out with each of the carts. So hopefully, this will expand, uh, the number of people who know about the program. And I should also add, we were actually the first city in the country to make this a permanent part of the, uh, recycling services that, uh, we offer here in this area.
You got a couple of questions, sir, Commissioner Craft and Commissioner Duda.
Yes, um, I've been participating, but I've had questions about what can and can't because I get ink cartridges that have a little bit of metal, but are plastic for the most part, as far as I know. Can that be put in the orange bag?
It probably shouldn't, simply because, um, and I'm no chemist, but I'm, would be very concerned about what the inks and what those, uh, make up are.
Then I have some garden stakes and some, uh, border fencing that goes around my tree to hold the, to hold the mulch in. It's small pieces, about three-eighths of an inch thick. Can that be put in the orange bag?
Uh, they can. In fact, we encourage people, when they have small pieces of plastic, they should go into the energy bag, not into the recycling because our system is set up to work on sizing of material. Anything, and this includes pill bottles, two inches or smaller, chances are it's gonna end up going to the landfill. And if, you can see that there's a number on a bottle, but it's small, I always encourage people to put that into a larger bottle with, like a detergent bottle. It does, RL can go into the energy bag.
Okay. When we had a presentation at the community service meeting, the young lady who showed us, came, showed us a fence post made out of this. And they showed us a piece that looked like drywall, but it wasn't.
Right.
What was that?
Uh, that's a program, uh, or a material that, uh, the technology came from Europe, but they're doing it in Des Moines. They're mixing, um, uh, aseptic packaging or milk cartons, which is partially paper and also plastic. They're compressing that into a sealing tile. In fact, uh, I've seen products that they've made very similar to what we have here in, in the hall.
And, you know, I'm, I'm cooking a frozen, uh, dinner and it pulls off the plastic fo, uh, plastic and it goes in there. I'm opening something and it's got a foil on it, does, and it says foil can go in there. Does that include aluminum foil?
Aluminum foil, no. If it's obviously a metal material, it should not go in there.
But we cannot put aluminum foil in regular recycling either, can't we?
Uh, no, we, uh, aren't, uh, encouraging that simply because what we have found, when people try to recycle their aluminum foil, it may still have half the chicken on it.
Ah, okay.
So...
And that chicken doesn't recycle well, does it?
Not, not necessarily, no.
No more questions. We don't know, wanna know what you eat.
I've been, uh, cut off by Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Duda.
First off, thank you, PJ. Dale, I, I've had the pleasure of knowing Dale for a long time and I think he's a real asset to the community. I, I honestly believe that Omaha is better off environmentally because of you and the work that you do. This is a, a neat program. I did not realize that we were a bit of a pioneer nationally, but I'm not surprised at that. Uh, I've been trying to do it, I was trying to do it before that committee meeting and I've gotta say, the bags are getting a whole lot easier to find now. I mean, the availability, we've got them out of the Florence Hy-Vee now. Well, they weren't there a month ago. You know, I mean, we really, a month ago it was hard to find. What has surprised me is how many of these I fill. Uh, I mean, between bubble wrap and plast, you know, big plastic bags and things that I hadn't really thought about. Man, I can fill one of these every couple of days.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's a great program. My question is, what happens today to the orange bag that I fill and comes down to First Star Fiber, Abe's picks it up and takes it to you? Is it pressed into that fence post? Is it burned? What, what is becoming of it today?
Uh, today, uh, it's actually, we have a load going to Winnipeg, um, Canada, which is gonna make some type of a sheeting material out of it.
Oh.
Uh, we next, uh, uh, in about three weeks, we'll be sending, uh, shipment to Tyler, Texas, to a pyrolysis plant.
Okay.
Where, and this is a, a company that is making the equipment that we're looking to put here in Omaha. Uh, we have had some sent to a Missouri, um, farmer who had the extrusion capability to make fence posts out of it. And then there, there is a, a young woman in, um, a southwestern Iowa looking to buy that system and move it to Iowa and she wants to use this material.
Very good.
So it just goes to show that, you know, what we think as waste, they're actually resources. We just have to get them into the right place and into the right form and they can go back into an economic system that creates jobs.
This is such a new segment of what I, you know, I've been trying to recycle for many years and, and suddenly there's more things that can be recycled now. It's really expanded, uh, the opportunities and I, I think it's just wonderful. I tip my hat to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you.
Dale, thanks for coming today. You and I were on a program, you know, within the last year specifically on this. And, uh, full disclosure, I was representing the Sierra Club and you were representing who you represent. But we talked in kind of depth about this. And so following up on, uh, some of the questions that Commissioner Duda raised, my understanding from that briefing was that, um, some of these materials, and we do a lot of recycling at our house, we're big into what, what you do, it's great, are taken and, and burned as fuel to make other products, is that right?
Yes, in fact, one of the other, uh, opportunities is there is a cement kiln down in the Kansas City area that uses it as a replacement for coal and petroleum. It, uh, one of the reasons why we like moving to these other is not just from an environmental point of view, although I, I do think they do a very good job of how they process material there, but they charge a tipping fee. And we're trying to find ways to, um, make it more economical as we go along. And that's why we're looking at these other opportunities.
And, you know, I, I don't expect you to know this, you're kind of the, the, the middle guy in terms of collecting and transporting to end users, right? So you, you're from the consumer to the end user, collecting and distributing.
We're at the end of the pipe.
Yeah. But this burning process, uh, and I think this was exactly what we talked about in order to fabricate concrete, right? Something like that?
Right, that's, it's a, uh, they're located next to a quarry and they have to heat the, um, limestone up to make cement.
Right. That has some implications relative to what they call a carbon footprint. I mean, some of that is a balance off of what we're doing now, you know, using alternative fuels in order to get away from as much carbon in the atmosphere as we can, as much CO2 in the atmosphere as we can. And, and part of this was, well, there's a little balancing act in terms of that. Do you have any idea, in the overall, you got 100 pounds of this stuff, how much of it goes to that kind of use? And then how much of it goes to the, you know, making, uh, items from fence posts to gosh knows what?
Sure. Well, I could, uh, specifically, we sent 13 tons, which isn't a lot, uh, to the cement kiln. But we have sent, uh, probably 20, probably 60 to 70 tons to these other locations. So, and we're moving in that direction.
So the majority would be not to that particular use?
Yeah.
Okay. The stuff that isn't burnt, then, the majority of this stuff is not burnt by anybody anywhere, as far as you know, is that right? Well, we're talking about the 70% now that's not going to this plant in, in Kansas City.
Right, that, uh, again, went to, um, this, um, pyrolysis, you know, as well as to this, uh, there's one load that we actually sent to a, um, so, uh, they make railroad ties.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately, they got there and they realized that they didn't have the equipment to pre-process it. So it had to come back, uh, to the cement kiln, so. But the idea is to always try to get the highest, best use for this material.
Right, I mean, this is part of the, what's the triad? Reduce, reuse, and...
Recycle and...
Recycle.
And recover. And, uh, on reduce, I, I do know that it has the impact because I realize just how many potato chips I'm eating now because of the Energy Bag Program.
Right, right, right. So, you're probably aware, I think maybe today or soon, the city council's taking up, uh, a ban on plastic bags in the, in the city. And those aren't every plastic bags. Those are the kind that you get like at the produce one, the very light plastic, rather than like what you use in your trash container, which is a heavier ply of plastic or what you would have in a formed, uh, uh, plate or whatever. Are those very light plastic bags, are those usable in this process?
Oh, yeah, very much so.
Okay. So they're kind of the bane of our existence, our friends from, uh, the landfill are here today and, and Mr. Home from Environmental Services. They've taken me out there and showed me, you know, you're getting close to the landfill because within five miles, you start seeing these plastic bags on everything. It's horrible. The percent of that really noxious, polluting form of plastic, which is the most that I can, I can, uh, say about this form of plastic, to this overall recycling stream that you're, you're, uh, managing here, do you have any idea what that percentage represents?
Uh, percentage, on a volume basis, it represents one of the biggest things that we're pulling out of, uh, off the line. On a weight basis, it's a very small percentage. I don't have figures for you, but I'm, I'm just going by.
Right. Yeah, they don't weigh very much, but they're, they're everywhere and, and there's millions and millions of them.
Yeah, just like, you know, these items that are on the list there, these are things that, there are better homes for it. And if we can get it into a better home, it's a resource that we should be recovering somehow.
Right. Well, I mean, we're all into this, uh, you know, reduce, uh, reuse, recycle, and, and redirect these things because it's good for our, our environment. What, if anything, would you want from Douglas County? I mean, we appreciate the information, but is, is there something that we could do that you would like us to do?
Uh, you could raise the landfill tip fee.
We've talked about that and, and, and believe me, that...
But let me just add to that, some communities are doing that and then putting the extra money into an enterprise fund.
Uh-huh.
That enterprise fund, they use to, uh, attract and assist local businesses, manufacturers, to turn those materials that otherwise would go to the landfill into products that create jobs, save energy and are good for the environment.
But that's an excellent point because you're familiar with Omagro, of course, and, which is made from yard waste collected here. And we kind of pioneered that in Nebraska and that has been copied now by Lincoln, Nebraska, with, I think they call it Link Grove, something like that. It's a mulch after you get done with, with, uh...
Sure.
Re-converting it and then it's sold on the market. The problems that Omagro has had here, economic problems of viability of the enterprise, are in part allayed in Lincoln because we don't charge a tipping fee for yard waste in Douglas County. And they do in Lancaster County. So the, the tipping fee thing that you're talking about is very, very topical right now because, I mean, we're discussing all of these streams of, of different wastes and it seems to me that tipping fee is something maybe that we'd have you back and talk to us about because... tipping fee is something maybe that we'd have you back and talk to us about, because it's right in the heart of a lot of this, making viable, better uses of what we're, what we're trying to recycle and reduce and reuse.
Right.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morgan?
Dale, thank you very much, and when I was fortunate enough to be mayor 25 or so years ago, we started the blue bag thing back in those days.
Yeah.
So that worked. Thank you.
Was that the question where you beat me?
I can't remember. I don't.
Commissioner Craft?
When yard waste is mixed in, this is a clarification, when yard waste is mixed in with garbage, the tipping fee applies. When it goes to the, not the landfill, the mulching place, it doesn't apply. And there'll be a community service meeting sometime later today, after our executive session quits, but is there a website that somebody can go to that we can announce here so that they can study what is on this?
Sure.
What is that website?
I believe it is heftyenergybag.com.
Okay, because it's not on this flyer.
Oh, okay.
At least I didn't see it, unless it's in very fine print. And I'm so glad Commissioner Duda mentioned potato chip bags, because that is a lot. And I was amazed, even though I don't eat a lot of potato chips, that I'm putting those in, I'm putting the little foil piece from a pop, my peel bottle in. Is that a different type of foil than aluminum foil?
Actually, yes. Those potato bags and the, and the little barriers...
Actually, a Mylar, isn't it?
It's mostly plastic, exactly, with a very fine coating of aluminum.
And, and the website again was heftybag.com?
Hefty Energy Bag.
Energy Bag.
Yeah.
And we will have Environmental Services, which is the landfill, at the community service meeting, if it doesn't get delayed today. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's it, Dale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I, oh, I appreciate it.
We'll go to item six, which is public hearings. Item A is a preliminary plot request by Richard Hartman, a preliminary plot of RH Acres, consisting of two residential lots, each over five acres in size, and an outlot for a 22-acre parcel described as part of the E half of, east half of Section 10- Township 14 North Range 10 East of 6. Parcel number 0105040027, and address 22909 West Q Road. This is public hearing, we'll officially open the public hearing. Doug?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Doug Cook, you're Douglas County Planner, 15335 West Maple Road.
All right.
The former Fitzgerald home. So the first three items on the agenda, all for the Hartmans, are all for the same property, as the chairman mentioned, 22909 West Q Road, a preliminary plot, a final plot, and a rezone from ag to rural residential. For the preliminary and the final plot, the request is to create a three-lot subdivision called RH Acres. Lot one is the proposed new home site. Lot two contains an existing home, and the third lot is the county required green space. The planning commission has recommended approval of the preliminary plot and the final plot. Then with regard to the rezone, the request is in character with the surrounding development and zoning. The planning commission has also recommended in favor of that. We would request three separate motions, one motion on each item, I just went through them really fast for you. So do you have any questions for me?
My job is issue.
Hold on, first PJ. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this issue? Again, anybody from the public. With that, we will close the public hearing on the, well, motion by Commissioner Borgson and second by Commissioner Duda to approve item A.
Can I ask the question?
Sure.
Who said you'd like to have three separate motions?
Yeah, this one is just on A.
Right, is there, many times we take these together, is there a reason you want three separate motions?
No, no, we, we, every item I have, there's a motion that follows it. So this, this would be the same way, the preliminary plot is the first motion, the final plot would be the second.
Okay, I thought we'd taken them together in the past. Thank you.
No, I just combined my presentation, because I know you're short on time.
So there's motion to second. Please vote.
All Commissioners voting yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent.
There's motion to, is there motion to approve item B?
So move?
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, they're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Clerk ready? Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Is there motion to approve item C? Motion by Commissioner Borgson, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
All Commissioners present voting yes.
Item D is the adoption of the International Building Code. This is a public hearing, also, we'll open the public hearing. Doug?
Okay, so same thing here, historically and traditionally, the county follows the same construction type codes as Omaha, as we have common contractors throughout both our jurisdictions. So recently, the city adopted the 2012 IBC, which is commercial construction, and the 2015 Omaha Plumbing Code. The planning commission recommends approval of adopting both of those codes. Again, I would ask for a separate motion on each of those codes, and do you have any questions for me?
Seeing none, this is a public hearing, we're going to take the public hearing on items D and E all at once and vote separately. Is there anybody who wants to comment on items D and E? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there motion to adopt item D?
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Craft.
This was just on item?
Oh, just on item D.
Just on D, okay. Thank you, go ahead.
Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle? Okay. Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Is there motion to approve item E?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We, okay, item F, we got a resolution approving the Deer Creek Golf Course Ordinance to allow operation of golf carts with vehicles within sanitary improvement district 405, 499, and 574. This is, well, we got to open the public hearing on it. Patrick, you want to comment on this?
Yep, so. This, in this public hearing, you will have the ability to first take action to waive the three readings. If you don't take action to waive the three readings, then you have to have three separate readings at three separate meetings. Statute does allow you to waive the second and third reading and just vote today on this matter. So this is a matter that was brought to my attention, representative representing the three SIDs that are adjacent to Deer Creek Golf Course would like to have the ability to drive golf carts within their subdivision, so they can ride, you know, two back and forth from the golf course. So this is the ability by statute for the county board can create this county ordinance. There's a gentleman here who would like to speak, I think, to just kind of elaborate on what this is about.
Okay, so this is public hearing, sir.
My name's Michael Purdy, I'm, my address is 7701 North 127th Avenue. I am the president of the Deer Creek Highlands HOA, and also a member of the trustees of the SID 499, which is the same area. I'm here basically just to answer questions that you might have on, on the golf court carts that we have in our, our community, which now are being driven on the streets illegally, and we'd like to have a statute that at least gives us some way to control the use of those golf carts on our, on our streets.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Okay, so I have friends in your neighborhood, and they have golf carts in their garage, I think, they go back and forth. Are you saying that, that you want to regularize that, or you want to ban that? What do you want?
Right now, officially, you cannot take that golf cart from your garage to the Players' Club clubhouse to use it on the golf course.
Okay.
That's illegal, so if a sheriff were to stop you, you would be, could be ticketed.
Right, many of these properties abut the golf course, so they like go on their own property down to the 18th...
None of the, none of the driveways attached to the golf course, in the golf course...
They, they drive down the side of the house on grass to the golf course, which is abutting their property, right?
The, Tim Halpine, the manager of the Players' Club, has indicated all golf course owners that they cannot use the golf course to get to the clubhouse.
I see, okay.
So they cannot do what you're saying.
Right. And that never happens.
Uh, no, most of the time they take the streets, it's much easier.
Right, right, okay, so what do you want to happen? Do you want them to be able to take the street or not?
We want them to take, be able to drive on the street. People with, with a valid driver's license and insurance can drive from their garage on the streets within the Deer Creek areas to the clubhouse, or to the pool, or to someone's house, or whatever, it'd be, it'd be a golf park community.
And that's what this ordinance says?
Yes.
And that's what the neighborhood wants?
The three SIDs, they're all trustees, have all voted in favor of this.
Okay.
Wait a minute, we're still in public here. Yep. Commissioner Duda?
This, this seems like a fine idea, and I'm happy to support it, but it also does lead to a few more questions. In small towns around Nebraska, you see the, the side-by-sides, the John Deere Ranger, or I mean a Polaris Ranger, or John Deere Gator, something like that, that maybe has an orange flag on it, and people are driving down the streets on them, and in some cases, I think legally, on some streets. My question is, will this be more than just golf carts if a person has a John Deere Gator? Wouldn't that also then be legal in the same places as your golf carts are going?
This ordinance strictly limits it to golf carts.
Okay, thank you. All right?
I want to thank Chris for the commercial. Or not Chris, Claire about the commercial about John Deere, he has an interest in it. Anyway, say that name again, John Deere. Anyway, I don't see a problem with John Deere driving on the streets too, I mean, if somebody has one, what the hell, you know, but anyway, I think this is a great idea, and I really like it, so I'm ready to vote.
To clarify, you need two votes, you need one to waive the second and third reading. Okay.
Anybody else want to comment on public hearing? Commissioner Craft?
Yes. The red flag, or a flag to let people know it's a golf cart and is a little more visible by putting that flag, is that in the ordinance?
That is not, no.
Should be in the ordinance.
I think that'd probably be a little overkill. We plan on putting signs to the entrance to all the, all the Deer Creek entrances that say that this is a golf cart community, and you may encounter a golf cart on the street.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Commissioner Boyle?
Would it be helpful to have those triangles on the back, that it's a slow-moving vehicle? No?
No, I don't think so.
Do cars drive on these same streets?
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing no further questions here, any more questions, again, any more questions out in the public? With that, we'll close the public hearing. Wait a minute, I need a, first, we need a motion to waive the second and third reading.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Chair Rogers, can we use the word suspend?
Okay.
So that we are with statute?
Uh, noted, and please, the motion is to suspend the second and third reading of this, by motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. You ready?
Yep.
Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
Is there motion to approve item F? So move, move by Commissioner Borgson, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Were we going to read the ordinance into the record, just the title of it?
Item F is the resolution approving Deer Creek Golf Course Ordinance to allow the operation of the golf car vehicles within sanitary improvement districts 405, 499, and 4574.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Please vote.
We are approving the resolution and the ordinance. We are approving, we are approving the resolution and the ordinance.
Deer Creek.
Both. Yep, yep. Go ahead and vote, we're ready.
Southeast of 120th and State Street.
On a golf cart? Yeah, on a golf cart.
I'm pressing, it's not doing anything.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, we also need your vote.
Just want me yes.
Okay, so motion passes, all Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item seven, which is committee actions and discussion. Letter A is the finance committee. Item one is the budget report as submitted. Item two, we'll go into budget discussion. Item two is the public defender's budget presentation for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Mr. Riley? So as he's preparing, all of y'all should be on notice at 12 and 1:25, depending where we are, we're going to have to go up to 9:03, I'm sure, so you don't know.
You take care of that. Thanks. You do. Mr. Steve?
Yep.
Okay. Thomas Riley, Douglas County Public Defender's Office, H05 Civic Center, and we have a PowerPoint presentation that will not, I don't believe will exceed the 15 minutes that you requested.
You're going to be here until they stop asking questions?
I don't want to drive anybody nuts, it's been a long morning already, so. The first, the first, first thing I suppose I should mention is that we are requesting over the recommend, recommended target by the county commissioners, and I'll try to explain what our situation is as we move through this PowerPoint presentation. Samantha Jordan is our trial assistant, and she is the person who knows how to work the technical, logical stuff that I don't, okay? So, as you can see, right off the bat, we have a staff chart, sort of lack of a better term, and the main, yes?
Just, just real quick, so everybody knows where we're at. Traditionally, on budget presentations, we have not clocked this, it's the budget, this is supposed to be one where everybody can ask whatever they're going to ask. I'll ask everybody to be considerate, but, you know, for budget items, we're here till we're here. So I'm just saying that, so, okay, just for the public to know, it, you know, all righty.
As you can see, we have myself at the, at the head, I'm responsible for everyone. And we have Carol Jennings, the office manager, who handles the supervisory, uh, jobs over the support staff, and we have four attorneys that are kind of senior attorneys that we designate as supervisors, and they each have a group of attorneys underneath them. Counting myself, we have 54 attorneys. Ann Holt is the supervisor of the juvenile attorneys, and Martha Warton, and she lists herself on this as hiring attorney, but she does way more than that. She is responsible for a lot of the managing, the caseloads on a month-to-month basis, which is a daunting task. So, as you can see, we have 54 attorneys, two of whom are, are part-time, they do a job share. We have 19 full-time support staff, three part-time support staff, and then we have law and, and office clerks. The law clerks, there's only a couple of them usually during the school year, and then in the summer, we, we have six, seven, or eight, and they work during the summer, and so we have to pay them, obviously, during that period of time, but it's sporadic. Basically, the, the structure that we've put together is in an effort to manage the employees' caseloads in a, in a efficient... the, the structure that we've put together is in an effort to manage the employees' caseloads in a, in a efficient manner that does not require us to ever have to tell the court, we've got too many cases and we can't handle the caseload. I know Lancaster County and some other counties, they, they cap their caseload, um, and will go and tell the court, we ain't taking more, any more cases. Um, and then they have to get farmed out to private counsel at the cost that you'll see later in our presentation as to what the costs are, at least here in Douglas County. We don't do that. We keep a, uh, track of the caseload and manage it accordingly, and we do that rather carefully. We also, uh, have the responsibility of doing appeals, which is against the Attorney General's Office. So if the prosecutors in Douglas County obtain a conviction, usually in a felony, um, the Attorney General's Office handles the appeals, not the county attorney's office. So we have, we, we have the responsibility of handling the appeals. We also have, uh, other issues that we have to deal with. As you know, we represent individuals who are subject to border mental health commitments. That also is done by the county attorney's office. We represent individuals who are in danger of being incarcerated because of failure to pay child support. That is not with the Douglas County Attorney's Office. The prosecuting entity is a contract entity that handles the child support prosecutions. And then, of course, we have, uh, the number of misdemeanors that we have. Go ahead and switch it to the next. The bulk of the misdemeanors are prosecuted by the city prosecutor's office. The Douglas County Attorney's Office handles the misdemeanor DV cases, domestic violence cases, but the vast majority of our caseload is against the, um, city prosecutor's office. As you can see from the chart, and these aren't statistics, either raw numbers, um, I can't manipulate them. They're, here's what they are. And as you can see, over the last several years, the caseload in misdemeanors has increased from, and these are, these are, uh, not fiscal years. This is January to December. Uh, the numbers have increased three thousand, um, from twenty fourteen. Well, not quite three thousand, to twenty eighteen. Um, the, we keep these numbers on a monthly basis, so I can tell you that for twenty nineteen, the numbers of twenty eighteen, it seems to have leveled off at, but the caveat is summertime usually result in an increase in misdemeanor, uh, charges because of some of the, the nature of some of the charges that, you know, people are outdoors, people are doing things that, uh, the police don't approve of, and, uh, they end up in court. One thing I would like you to note is that with regard to misdemeanors, um, we work very closely with the city prosecutor's office and that, with regard to mental health court and some diversion programs that they have initiated. We also do that with the Douglas County Attorney's Office, but keep in mind, most of the cases that are, are diverted, are diverted before we get involved. Sometimes, um, we can, when a case is filed, we can convince the prosecutor, whether it's the county attorney's office or the city prosecutor's office, to let someone go into drug court, or go into mental health court, or whatever. Some of them are initiated by the prosecutors themselves. Some of them, what I would call lower hanging fruit. The ones that we, that need maybe some persuasion, uh, that's what, where we come in. Uh, go ahead, next slide, Sam. Okay, now, this, this is an interesting, uh, number here. This is our, our juvenile delinquency cases. And as you can see, they were pretty steady for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen at between eleven fifty and eleven ninety. Twenty seventeen, we saw a significant spike. Twenty eighteen, we saw a equally significant decrease in the number of delinquency cases that were, uh, initiated in juvenile court. I suspect some of that has to do with increased numbers of, uh, diversion-type programs and things along those lines. The caveat I would tell you now, however, is that, um, twenty eighteen appears to be rather a bit of an anomaly. And we, we are anticipating that the numbers will spike back up to the, uh, numbers certainly between twenty fourteen and twenty seventeen. We are, right now, as of last week, uh, there's a forty-eight percent increase in the number of filings and delinquency cases in juvenile court, which would definitely indicate the likelihood that this number for twenty nineteen is going to fall more in line with, um, the previous, uh, four years. And as I said, it looks like that is a bit of a, an anomaly. With regard to juvenile court, I would remind, uh, the court that, or, I'm sorry, I called you the court. I'm so used to saying that. Yesterday, I was standing in front of seven people with robes on, and I was just as nervous in front of them as I am with you. But we, I would remind you that we, um, also handle, uh, cases in juvenile court where a parent is in danger of losing, losing their parental rights. And that was an agreement that we entered into with the county board. As some of you may recall, initially, we were doing guardian ad litem work. And we found that we were having to conflict out of numerous criminal cases because oftentimes, the child that we were representing was also the victim of a, uh, frequently an assault, uh, or some criminal allegation by a parent. So we were having a conflict out of numerous criminal cases. So we came to the board and suggested that maybe a, a wiser decision would be to switch around and have us do the, the, what we call parent cases, so we can handle them in juvenile court and also handle them in the criminal charges that they're facing, which arise out of the same incident. I, we all kind of agreed that that was a, uh, much more cost-efficient way of doing things. Now, it led to some difficult issues with, I know, the GAL system, uh, but I, I, I do think in the, um, grand scheme of things, that this was the right way to go, and, um, I think it's, it's worked out for the best. Next, okay. Felonies, which of course are the most, uh, time-intensive work that we do. As you can see, um, from twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen, there is a increase of approximately twelve hundred felonies. I can tell you that if you want to go back a few more years, it, it's even more startling, but we, we stopped at twenty fourteen because I didn't want to, you know, go too far back. But I can tell you that there has been, as you can see from twenty fifteen on, there had been a significant spike in felonies. And I, I'm always, uh, astounded when I hear presentations by people who say that crime is down. And I, I remember at one of the Criminal Justice Management Committee meetings that I think some of you attended, the police officer was there saying, "Crime's down," and, and, and I'd say, "Hey, wait a minute. I got people in the county board that are my funding entity, and I'm going and telling them our caseload's going through the roof, and you're telling them the crime's down," and they're going to say, "What, what, are you nuts, Riley?" Well, so I kind of did what I do best, and that's cross-examine the officer. And, and we found out that their crime statistics do not include drug cases, do not include possession of firearm cases, and do not include a lot of things that used to be misdemeanors that are now felonies, like, oh, third defense, graffiti, it's felony. Some of these things, so they don't really count those in their statistics now. I'm not going to get on my politician hat and say why they do that. I'll leave that to your, uh, you can speculate, but I think we all know what the reason is. Uh, the fact of the matter is, and Don, if Don was here, he was here earlier, he could tell you that, and, oh, are you still here? There you are, Don. I ain't nuts on this, am I? So the, so the, the caseload is, these are serious cases. And while I, I do acknowledge that in the last year, there's been a decrease in homicides. In the previous years, there, they were kind of going through the roof. I think at one time, maybe sixteen, eighteen months ago, we had forty-some-odd, uh, pre-trial detainees in the county jail awaiting disposition on homicide cases. Now, there, I know there was a period of time that there was about five months where there were no homicides. That doesn't mean there weren't any shootings. Doesn't mean there weren't any assaults. They're just, luckily, no one died. And I suppose there's a number of factors that you could consider on that. But, uh, to be honest with you, unless it's the death penalty case, a drive-by shooting that doesn't result in a death is damn near as time-intensive on the attorneys as a, a homicide, where the only difference is, in many cases, that one additional witness is coroner, or the, uh, doctor that performed the autopsy. But a lot of the rest of it is pretty much, um, the same. I could also tell you that in the last several years, whether you're prosecuting a serious felony or defending a serious felony, it's become way more difficult for lawyers because we ain't scientists, and forensic science has really exploded. And you, one of the reasons I became a lawyer is because I sucked at math and science. And, uh, now, I'm finding myself having to try to figure out computer software engineering programs, DNA, uh, profiles, and how they arrive at them. Uh, they have, basically, as, as many of you know, uh, frequently, cell phones, the, they can be located at the ti, you know, if a shooting occurred at a certain time, and the suspect, they get his phone records, and they have this way that they can somehow mathematically figure out if the phone was at or near the area where the shooting occurred. All of these things, um, we, these lawyers have to learn. And, you know, for a while, it was only the, those of us who were doing the most serious cases. Now, and Don can, can tell you this, um, they have, uh, UNMC DNA lab has purchased a, what they call a probabilistic genotype and computer program that changes the way they do DNA analysis. And they're going to be using it on possession of a firearm charge, felt by a prohibited person. It's a serious felony. There's a lot of time. And, uh, you know, let's assume that in a lot of those cases, four guys will be driving down in a car, and the gun will be under the seat, and they may charge the two guys in the front seat. Now, they're going to be using DNA to see the touch DNA, whose DNA is on that gun. So not only do the lawyers who are doing the most serious stuff have to kind of learn all of this, now even the lawyers are doing the lower, well, I don't want to call them lower serious felonies. They're, they're, um, less, historically, they've been less complex. Now, they're getting complex. We, um, these numbers, the way we keep our numbers is by, by case. So if a guy gets charged with six armed robberies in the same charge, we count that as one case. A lot of, uh, public defense entities will count that as six cases. I, I think that's deceptive, so I, we don't do it that way. Now, sometimes that works to our detriment because the way we keep our stats, if we have a client who gets placed on probation and the prosecutors file a violation of probation, we don't open another file on it. It's still the same, same case. So with what they have now called post-release supervision, which is kind of semi-parole, um, they can violate that, and they can violate, uh, probation, and those necessitate court hearings as well. You know, if a person, um, is not participating in some of the programming that, uh, his probation requires, they may file a violation, and there could be a court hearing as a result. So, um, I just don't want to, I don't want to mislead you, but I don't want to shortchange what some of the work is that we have to do. Okay. All right, this bar graph here shows what the hourly rates are for private court-appointed attorneys. As you can see, uh, on the left, or on my left, uh, it's eighty bucks an hour for district court, whether you're in or out of court. And that was just recently increased. And I, that's a fair number. I, I don't want anyone to misunderstand what I'm saying. Misdemeanors, they pay fifty dollars an hour, and frankly, if I were in private practice, I probably wouldn't want to be taking too many misdemeanor cases at fifty bucks an hour because, as I'm sure Mr.'s Boyle and Kavanaugh know, that with the overhead, that becomes kind of a losing proposition. And juvenile court just raised their rates to sixty-five dollars an hour for court appointments. And juvenile court has lots and lots of, uh, private attorneys that get court-appointed, and a lot of it is just innate to the juvenile court system because lots of people have the right to attorneys up there. But what we're showing here is the difference between what our lawyers are making, and this is an average, of the people who primarily do felonies, primarily do juvie, and primarily do misdemeanors, and what the difference is per hour, and how a public defender's office is a, in a large part, a money saver for the funding entity. Keep in mind that government does not have a choice when it comes to, uh, appointing attorneys. The Constitution requires it. Some, some jurisdictions don't have public defenders, and they just appoint private attorneys and pay for it that way. Some have public defender's offices that do work part-time as a public defender and part-time as a private practitioner. A lot of that has to do with population and caseloads. Most of the larger, uh, municipalities have a public defender's office. Some are statewide. Some are county-operated. I, I'm here to tell you, county-operated is, in my view, the best way to go because there's oversight by you folks, and there's only six or seven of you that we have to have interaction with instead of, in many states, you have to do with the state legislature, the senate, and the House of Representatives here. You'd have to do with the unicameral. And, uh, you know, what good for Western Nebraska may not be the same. Then, we're in a different boat than many other places. Lots of places in Western Nebraska have twenty, thirty felonies a year, and I can understand why they don't want to fund, uh, an office. The caveat is, is when something bad happens, and six people get charged with murder, and they don't have a public defender, then they're eighty bucks an hour for six murder cases, and that, you can see where that will go. I can tell you that the, the lawyers in our office, most of them are young lawyers. We have, of the supervisory group, I think, um, all four of them have been in the public defender's office for twenty-five years or more. And with all due respect to my friend Don, he, he doesn't get to keep his senior lawyers because they become judges. Ours are pretty much stay in our office. So we have, we have a younger staff. His, his staff is pretty young, too. And that, that's the nature of the beast when, in these kind of, kind of offices. But, you know, the thirty highest paid i, in the county, we have eight. And that's mainly those supervisory people and a few others who've been here for a long time. I'm sure Don's, um, higher-paid are also here for a long time, and that's, that's, you know, even if you give three percent raises over a period of twenty-five years, you know, you're going to end up making some decent salary. Go ahead, the next one. All right, now, the, the only difference between this and the previous slide is this, we included the supervisors because they have a caseload too. It's not as heavy as the, the line staff attorneys. But as you can see, the, the difference is rather minimal, even when we include the higher-paid part of our staff. On our, uh, on this pie graph, you can see that, like many offices, public defender offices, uh, the vast majority is personnel cost. And only six percent of our budget is non-salary, which is, uh, three fifty-one. which is three fifty-one, six twenty-five. You asked me not to increase that, I didn't. I didn't ask for any increase in that, in that number. Do we have more? Okay. This, this is a Cliff Notes version of some of the things we do to try to minimize costs that we can control. As you know, we have no control over our caseload at all. It's who gets popped and charged, and we get appointed, that's how it goes. I would say we probably do seventy-five to eighty percent of the felonies, probably more like sixty to seventy percent of the misdemeanors, because a lot of them go pro se. You know, someone will get charged with trespass at Stevenson, or the Francis Santa House, and judge will say, okay, you've been in jail for two days, if you plead guilty, we'll give you time of cost service, and I said, done, out the door, so they don't get attorneys. As you can see, here, our law clerks, we pay them twelve bucks an hour. Bernie Sanders would be pissed off at me, but that's what we're doing. Office, the, the office clerks, we pay ten bucks an hour. These are mainly high school, college kids who are doing, working part-time, doing things like copying, creating files, some of the less serious work that we do. We have a folks-to-service coordinator for both juvenile and adult court, and they, their primary function is to decrease the jail and youth center population. Both of them, there's one for juvie and one for adult court, they work very closely with the youth center and with the Douglas County Jail. I got to tell you, Mark Foxall and Mike Myers have been absolutely terrific to work with. They have been very forward-thinking, very, you know, I heard one of the people here saying it used to be a lot of lock 'em up and throw away the key. Well, Foxall and Myers aren't like that. They recognize that everyone that's in their jail is not Jack the Ripper, and they, they work with us at, at great length. We've created programs with them and processes with them to get people out of jail that have mental health issues, to try to get them into treatment centers. It ain't always easy, because we have to get the court's approval, too. But, we've had, I would say, significant success in both decreasing the population of the county jail and the youth center for our clients. I can't speak for private attorneys, that's on them. We have Spanish-speaking attorneys and support staff, so we can minimize the use of interpreters. As you can imagine, we have a significant amount of Spanish-speaking clients, and we have, I believe, five attorneys who speak Spanish, who are fluent in Spanish, and I believe we have, how many support staff, four or five?
Six attorneys, five staff.
So, okay, six attorneys and five support staff that speak Spanish. And, that is, I'm telling you, it's a huge saving to have people like that, so we don't have to have, every time we go to the jail, hire an interpreter for a jail interview, have someone, you have to set up an appointment with an interpreter to talk to the family, to talk to, anyway, so this is a big deal. Now, I will tell you, in, in honesty, that the Spanish-speaking population of clients is the highest, there are a number of other ethnic groups that are now coming in, in larger numbers, and unfortunately, I don't have people that speak Noor, or some of the other East Asian languages, Vietnamese, Thai. So, that, that may not be as great a factor, but I still think the Spanish speakers are by far the most, and I'm telling you, it's a, it's a save, saving proposition for us. And, we play, we pay them a whole lot more than the non-English speakers, I think we give them five hundred bucks a year more, because they're Spanish speakers, and that isn't a hell of a lot, but that's what we can do. Obviously, when we're handling cases, one of the things we might want to do is take depositions of witnesses, we may want transcripts of hearings, and we may need to hire experts. I'm, we've instituted a, a process in the office where they have to get approval from either myself or one of the supervising attorneys before even a deposition is taken, because depositions are not cheap. My first reaction to anyone is, have you interviewed the witness yourself? Now, some witnesses, when you say, hello, this is Tom Riley from the public defender's office, and I know that our client is accused of murdering your brother, but I'd like to interview you, Vic. So, sometimes you have to take depositions, but I always, I always say, make, make a shot, first attempt at interviewing the witnesses with one of our investigators or with Samantha, so they can testify if need be. But, depositions are an important part of our process, and typically, when it comes with expert witnesses, a lot of that, you're going to get depositions. As Carol Jenny could tell you, she's kind of the, why do I want to say that, how do I want to say this without having to get hit in the back of the head? She makes sure that, that we get copy machines, computers that are redeployed within the office, or from outside, that we don't go out and go to stores and buy desks if we can get them from storage. We have laptops that, you know, everyone in the office doesn't have one, we have like, how many?
Eight.
We have eight laptops now, that we have the lawyers check out, and, and the investigators check out, because right now, almost all of the discovery in felony cases is on disks. In other words, when I first started, if a witness was interviewed by the police, or a suspect was interviewed by the police, all you would get was a police report, which would be a summary of what happened. Now, they videotape the interviews in serious cases, and they videotape the interviews with the suspects. These can be three, four, five-hour-long interviews. And typically, what we do is, we've got an arrangement with the jail to allow us to have the lap, some laptops that are placed at the jail, that are wiped clean of any access to internet and Facebook and all that stuff, and we can send the investigators over, so the client can watch the video. It's really not very cost-effective to have a lawyer sit there with the client for five hours, watching the interview. So, what we do is, we have the investigators do it, and, you know, the client can sit there and say, okay, I don't want to watch anymore, I'm done, or, hey, man, I want to see this again. Then the lawyer goes over and says, okay, now, you've, you've seen all of this, I've seen all of this, tell me what you have to say, and it, it makes sense. And, once again, you know, the investigators, they, they aren't lawyers, so they aren't giving legal advice, but they're there to help the, the client go through the discovery. And that, we have found to be a very effective way of doing things. I've had little or no complaints from the, from the clients about, hey, when, when, look, my lawyer is going to come over here. We explain to them, you know, we go over and talk to them a couple of times, and tell them, hey, look, if you're in jail, we're going to send investigators over with, with the discovery materials, so you can watch them. So, that's how that operates. We, I'm a real cheapskate when it comes to travel and seminars. I honestly, you know, that we get numerous mailings from organizations across the country about going to seminars, and none of them are in Bismarck, they're always in Vegas or Miami, and all these places, San Francisco, which are great tourist places, but it's almost embarrassing. They, hey, hey, Tom, there's this great seminar on drunk driving in, in Vegas in June, do you mind if I go? Yeah, I do. Now, we ain't doing that. So, what we try to do is, as you know, we have to have continuing legal education now, mandatory, and one of the other things that Martha does is she arranges with the Bar Association, we put together an in-house CLE that covers basically half of the requirement, and it's done by us, so it doesn't cost anything. We can't do it all CLE, the Bar Association won't let us do that, because the Bar Association wants to make a few bucks, too, and they put it all on the seminars. So, any of the seminars that I have people go to are either webcasts, or in-state, through either Criminal Defense Attorney Association or the Bar Association. We have also, we have lawyers that handle immigration. The Supreme Court has said that defense lawyers have to inform non-citizens of the possible ramifications of convictions of certain offenses. This ain't easy stuff. There's a US Supreme Court case called Padilla that mandates it. So, what we did is, we got four lawyers that volunteered, most of them are, several of them are Spanish speakers, and one of them is really good friends with the immigration teacher at University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and he comes up on every couple of months and does a free presentation to our immigration attorneys to keep them up, up to date on what's what. If, if, if a client is not properly advised of what the ramifications of a conviction are, as to their status, whether their legal status or illegal, that conviction is going to get set aside. And it's happened on a number of occasions, now, now people are wising up and saying, hey, you know what, you better, you better have someone in your office who knows that. This is specialized stuff. I mean, I, I don't know it, and, but we have lawyers that do. So, that's kind of the, the thumbnail of what, what we're doing. What I did in our budget is, well, I checked, and our last payroll was about two-hundred-and-five-thousand. So, multiply that by thirteen, because any raises that I'm requesting for the attorneys aren't going to go into effect until January. So, roughing it out at two oh five, we, we multiplied it by thirteen pay periods, which is, I know, that's rounding it out, and came up with the number, and then we put a three percent increase for the second six months, which I thought was in keeping with your request for one point five, for the fiscal year, and that came out to about two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand per pay period, so it's about a seven-thousand-dollar difference per pay period. And, we also are asking permission to hire one additional attorney. I think the numbers justify it, and I don't want to be in a position, I'm, well, I'm, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm never going to, and, over my dead body, am I going to go and tell a judge, we ain't taking this case? I, I'm not going to do that, we'll figure out a way. But, I do think that we need another attorney, we've got room for one more, we got, there's one office that is kind of next to the bathroom, that no one wants, and that, that would kind of fill us up. I mean, I could ask for, I, I would love to have a couple of more social services coordinators for juvenile court and for adult court, because the need is there, but I just don't think, at this point in time, that that is my priority, I think it's an additional attorney. We had, what, in my letter dated April sixteenth to you, my budget request appeared to be five eight thirty-seven, seven sixty-six, which is what appears on the agenda here. Couple of weeks ago, Joe called us and said, they ran it through Hyperion again, and it was like fifteen thousand dollars more than that. The first Hyperion number we got was the five eight thirty-seven, which is what I requested. The second one, I don't know why that is, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to go there, I'll, I'm, it's fifteen thousand dollars, I'm going to, I know I'm asking for more than, than you've put as your baseline, but the, the main thing that drives the increase in, in pay is, as you know, we have a statutory obligation to have the lawyers in our office, who are of equal experience and equal responsibility, be paid the same as the county attorney's office. And what I do, with Don's help all the time, is I get, when I'm preparing my budgets, I, Don provides me with their, their payroll and enough information that I can approximate the experience levels, and I, we're always like one cycle behind them, because I, I'll get the numbers when we're proposing this stuff, I get the numbers for what the current fiscal year's numbers are, and I, I'm, I'm at the point where I'm saying, if I can get close, and I'm only one year behind, couple of percentage points, I'm not going to squawk about that. His attorneys deserve every dime that they get, and I think ours do as well. I know it's a, at first blush, it looks like, oh, my God, what's Riley doing here? But, that's kind of where I'm at, and unless there are questions, I will shut up.
You do have questions, but we need to recess and go to nine oh three, because the city council needs to get in here at one thirty. So, with that, we're going to recess till one forty?
Where are we going?
Nine oh three.
Okay.
Give them time to get set up and everything.
Motion, motion?
Yes.
Make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Board, recess until one forty. Second by Commissioner Duda, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? I'm sure it'll pass. Thank you. Motion passes. Motion passes.